Welcome to the April 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers on the bookshelves if you need one. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner La Croix, please.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the County Board of Equalization member oath of office. Ms. Cindy Moller, please. Do you want us all to stand up together, Ms. Cindy?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Individually? I... Okay, is ready? I have had...
I, Gary Drews, am a member of the Board of Equalization in Pennington County in the state of South Dakota for the year 2019. The first duties form depose and say that I will fairly impartially perform all acts joined on meeting by law to the end that all assessments within above county may be complete, unjust, and equal as between the property holders. Next year, we may have to practice.
That's funnier that we can do it. We don't have a unison, can we, right here? Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Is that yours? Yes, it is. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Next is a presentation of the 2019 CSF Hero Award to the Pennington County Sheriff's Office by the Central States Fair and Black Hills Stock Show. Lloyd, you're also with Ron today. If you'd like to do a little...
Oh.
You are the liaison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. If I could have a few moments of your time, General Manager, Central States Fair, Ron Jeffries. So, I just want to remind the county commissioners, the people of Pennington County, and certainly everyone from the Fair Board, how lucky we are to have the fine men and women that serve the Pennington County Sheriff's Department with us here today and every day of the year. Each year, the Central States Fair provides what we call a Hero Award to an individual or a group of people or an organization that has provided some kind of services to not only Central States Fair but to our community. And this year, the Central States Fair has chosen the Pennington County Sheriff's Office to receive that award. The things that makes Pennington County Sheriff's Department special to the Central States Fair include, among other things... Now, first of all, this is not just a security service that the Pennington County Sheriff's Office provides to the Central States Fair, but they set up a mobile command post. They monitor all the video cameras from Central States Fair to watch all areas of the fairgrounds to keep things safe and watch for any incidences. They locate missing parents and missing children. They provide a service as a lost and found. They work with the... What's your patrol group, your young kids called?
Explorers.
Explorers group to come back in and provide services throughout and provide a presence. But it's more than just a presence that they provide. They work as a sense of building community relationships at this event. And they do that several ways. First of all, that mobile command center also happens to be an area where people come and ask questions and have a positive interaction with our Sheriff's Department. They also do it through the Sheriff's wagon that they bring to range days rodeos. And we do it through our military, our first responders' recognition night at the Central States Fair. They also bring in a number of vehicles and allow the citizens to come back in and again have another experience with one of their themed vehicles at the fairgrounds. In addition to that, patrol inside and outside, and I say patrol, but it's more of a community engagement. This is never a gotcha moment for the Sheriff's Department. It's always a chance to go back out and have a positive impact at Central States Fair. And on behalf of the Central States Fair Board of Directors and the Central States Fair staff and all the people of Pennington County, we'd like to present this award to Craig Wood, Sheriff Tom, Tony Harrison, and the entire Pennington County Sheriff's Department.
Lloyd, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Jeffries said. You know, the Sheriff's Department presence at the fairgrounds and other areas in our community are, is a community outreach, and they're doing a fantastic job on that. You know, as in most communities, they see police officers or law enforcement, they run, and these guys, you see them socializing and talking and meeting with people and with the young people. That's very important. And so, my hat's off, and I think the Fair Boards also had a great discussion on how important they are and how their outreach really affects the young people in the community. So, with that, I'm internally grateful and I appreciate you guys' presence and how you handle the public and your outreach. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can we get a picture?
Sure.
Absolutely. Yeah. Where do you want us?
Let's just all right here.
Right here?
Got it, thank you.
Next is a review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
There are moves.
Motion by Drews, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Hawley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 19th, 2019; number eight is approval of the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Twin Rocks Road District, and this is going to be effective for the tax year 2019 and after. We had a clerical error on that one. Number nine is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on April 16th, 2019 for budget supplement SP-19-009 for the General Fund Health and Human Services Community Development Block Grant Budget. Number 10 is approval of the Letter of Support Regarding the Revised Definitions of the Waters of the United States. Number 11 is the approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the Black Hills Back 40 Mountain Bike Race. And finally, number 12 is to continue the Trans-Canada Keystone XL Pipeline-Hall Road Agreement to the April 16th, 2019 Commission Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix, please.
Item 10, please.
Number 10. Any others? Not? Do we have a motion for all the agenda, seven through 12, except the number 10?
There are moves.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner La Croix, number 10, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only reason why I had this bold is so people take a little time to read it and to express that Pennington County supports clean water and we have in the past. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the community that that's one of our goals. And by completing this form and sending it off, that's what we're telling the community and our representatives. Otherwise, I have no problem with it.
Thank you, Commissioner La Croix. Do we have a motion on number 10, please?
I move approval of number 10.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we're on the regular agenda items, 13 through 20. First, we'll have the 2018 Financial Compliance Audit, State of South Dakota Legislative Audit, Mr. Bruce Hines. Hines, how are you, sir?
Morning, I'm Bruce Hines. I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. Just want to stop and let you know, I've been here for a couple, two, three weeks already. We're starting our annual audit of the county's records. Everybody should have a copy of what I call our engagement letter, kind of outlines what our response, what the audit process is, kind of what our responsibilities are, what the county's responsibilities are. One thing I was going to point out that's at the bottom of page three, it talks about some services, some non-audit-related services that we're going to assist with. We've done this the last few years, helping with the notes for the financial statements, the schedule of pension-related information that needs to go in the report, and then also the schedule of federal funds. So, and that's another thing that we look at is the federal monies. You guys receive over $750,000 of federal monies. We're required to audit that. That's part of the whole uniform guidance requirements.
Mr. Hines, can you kind of outline what you do for Pennington County for the public that doesn't know what you do as the state coming in, looking at...
Well, we come in, Cindy and her staff prepare an annual report for the county every year. We go through and test all the numbers on that annual report, verify their accuracy. We've got, as part of the audit process, we go through and verify you're in compliance with state laws, federal laws, as far as the federal audits or grants are concerned. We test like your pass-through monies that go on to the other taxing entities. We take a sample of payroll, sample of vouchers, sampler receipts, test them through the system to verify the system's functioning properly, test the internal controls.
Lot.
Yeah, it's a $300 to $400 job, I think, is what we've been running, around $350 to $400, I think, is what it takes us. Another guy, Al Schaefer's here helping me. Like I said, I want to stop by today and let you know that we're here, see if you guys have any questions, and also that we're working in the back room of the auditor's office. If you don't have anything to date, feel free to stop by anytime you want, get questions, concerns, something specific you want us to take a look at or anything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Any questions? If not, a motion, please.
I've got the original letter. If I can get Cindy signed it, I just need your autograph.
Thank you, sir. Grab that from Holly if you'd like.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair's signature on the engagement letter from the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit for the 2018 audit.
Motion by Drews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by La Croix. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 14, lien request, release request.
Madam Chair, I do not see the applicant in the audience at this moment. I guess I'd ask the board table this for a little bit to see if he comes.
Okay.
Move to table.
Moved by La Croix to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 15 is a request to put on hold the isolated tract. Do we want to indefinitely or postpone indefinitely or...
Yes, Commissioners, you've received a request from Ms. Barbara Steele to put on hold the activities related to the isolated tract declaration. So, the motion that we're looking for today is to cancel the site visit that was scheduled on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. and further move to postpone indefinitely the Steele-isolated tract per the applicant's request.
I'd make that as a motion.
Motion by Drews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 16, please. Thank you, Ms. Hawley.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that too, Ms. Hawley. That'd be Mr. Tom. Creation of policy for housing allowance for deputies assigned to WAL.
Morning, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. And just want to give you a little background as to how we got to here. Historically, we've had trouble with housing in WAL just in terms of availability, and so it creates problems frankly in filling positions out there. Of course, we added a fourth position now with the school resource officer position, so it emphasizes the need to try and do something. We've been creative in recruiting other things, and frankly, I haven't had any success. And so, starting on the past, first, I talked to Cindy, the auditor, and talked to Legislative Audit because they happened to be in her office that morning. And I went to John from County HR, visited him, talked to Joe from County Highway to see if we'd have any ripple impact on their programs if we brought this forward, and it doesn't. And the policy, and we sent you a draft. Legislative Audit tells us that in order for the county to reimburse it, it has to be in a policy approved by the Commission. So, that's why we're here asking for you to approve it. Typically, we don't bring all of our agency policies in front of you, but this one requires reimbursement. So, Legislative Audit said the Commission has to approve it, so that's what brings us in front of you today. And then, the auditor pointed out something that I think we should correct in this draft if you choose to approve it. Under the C at the bottom, it talks about the sum will be subject to taxes but not retirement contributions. We're a little unclear if that's accurate or not, so if you do approve it, I would strike that last line in C. That was a good catch by the auditor until we get that sorted out and probably doesn't need to be in the policy either. And I did visit with the mayor from WAL, and he's supportive of this as well. So, I think we've tried to cover all the bases and hopefully anticipate any questions you may have. I was asked yesterday what the cost would be. It comes to about $14,400 a year for the four positions that are out there. And of course, that's cost shared with the city of WAL through our contract, but stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Sheriff Tom. Discussion?
Question.
Mr. Drews, Commissioner Drews.
So, it's a cost share for all four or just the one?
All four.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion? Motion?
I'd move approval with adjustments of item C.
Taking out, to strike the sum will be subject to taxes but not retirement contributions, Ms. Kara. So, that's a motion, second?
I'll second.
Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 17, abatement application, Martin Degler. Mark? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Martin Degler. I'm a physician assistant. I work here at Rapid City Regional Hospital. My wife and family moved here in 2014 from Wisconsin. And when we got here in South Dakota, we searched around to buy a property that we can own to call it our home. I started working, and we found a piece of land and butt, and afterwards, we found a builder who started building our house in September 2015. And then, by May of 2016, he completed our house, and we were able to move into our house. But in the process, we worked with the city, tried to get permit and things that are for our building process. And then, we came to the point where we had to have our home assessed. The appraiser came to our home to find, to do his assessment and to be able to give the accurate tax that we are to pay to the state or the county. And so, during that process, when the appraiser came, we were now at a site. So, he called our phone and left messages for us to call and make clarification as to what part of the home is finished and to just get all of the necessary information so that he can accurately appraise our home. And so, I was at work, my wife called and spoke with the individual at the Equalization Office. And that discussion went on, and my wife gave the person all of the information they needed. And after this, let's say during this time, there was no communication as to whether we, and there is such a law of non-occupy or, let's say, non-una-occupy or una-occupy. And so, we were not aware of any law of this kind. So, we received our assessment with our tax amount, which we continued to pay until the beginning of this year. We got to know that our house was marked as non-una-occupy. And so, we tried to, I mean, let's say inquire about this, and we called the Equalization Office, and they said, yes, we did not, at the time, we moved in our house or the assessment was being made, we should have received a notice either in the mail telling us to classify our home to be una-occupy instead of non-una-occupy. So, to my knowledge, I could not remember receiving that notification, although the argument would go that each year, the county or the Equalization Office would send us assessment notice. And on that notice, I think this is the backside of that, and that's just, this is basically talk about if we have any issue about our assessment and that we want to appeal by the amount, we should call the Equalization Office and set up meeting and discuss that. They gave the date and time of their meeting. And then, that paragraph is a big paragraph if you go through it, but the next paragraph start with explaining what needs to be done, but then the last few sentences, it talk about if this is your principal resident, please review this notice to verify that your property is classified as una-occupy before the March 15 deadline. And so, yes, we get this assessment notice in the mail, it comes to us, but if there's a law to tell the citizen that we have to register our home una-occupy or non-una-occupy, that should be open and clear and transparent to the common citizen that do not read the law. And so, I went on the Pennington County website, on the codified law, the session that talked about taxation, and I went there, it talked about item 10-13-39. It explains the classification of una-occupy single-family dwelling. Point one, request to classify certain una-occupied property and portion occupied by una assessed as separate unit appeal. So, the law is clear, as I went through this, I saw that we, it is saying that we are to classify our home, but the way you wish this is being done is not clear to the common citizen. If you go, let's say, the law in South Dakota or in the state, if you're driving down the road, there's a speed limit that tells you you are not to go beyond the speed limit, and it is clear. And if you violate that, you are penalized. When I went through this, I could not see anything, anything, any session that said that if you do not classify a home as una-occupy, you'll be penalized with increase in your tax or whatever. If I missed that, I think that should be brought to my attention. But I went down to session 10-13-40.3, it talked about penalty for fraudulent receipt of una-occupy single-family dwelling classification. So, if you do not tell the county or the city that you have so many property, and then, let's say, if you have so many homes or property and you register them as una-occupy, the county will come after you and you'll be fined, you'll be penalized. But if you only have one home on your name, which is going to Pennington County and search for property which is open to the public, you search for property, and if your name is there, there will be your property listed under your name. And if you see that, that there's somebody that has only one property under their name, and automatically that property is being defaulted to non-una-occupy, I don't think that that is the right way to communicate with the common citizen and then increase their tax because they are not able to, you know, tell you that I'm living in the home. I think there should be reformation. This is the main point of my coming here. I was working at a hospital, but because of this matter, and I'm not only here to represent myself and my family, and I'm not only here to appeal for abatement, but I'm appealing for reformation in the law, that it should be clear and transparent. The Equalization Office, in my opinion, should be able to tell people during the assessment, the person that is coming to do the appraisal should be able to communicate with the owner of that house or that property and say, this is your home, are you going to live there? Ask that question. If the person tells you, no, I'm not going to live there, then you can default their home as non-una-occupy. If the person tells you, yes, I'm going to live there, and they tell them that they need to fill out the form and send it to the Equalization Office, but nothing like that will communicate it to us. And to our surprise, our home was listed as non-una-occupy since 2016, and we have been paying the 20% above our property value, assessment value, which brought us to the point in that there are many people that we have spoken with who have had the same problem around here. And even, in fact, it was brought to our attention because this person had the same problem way back that he was listed as non-una-occupy when he himself built his home, and nobody told him that he has to register his home as una-occupy. When I went to the Equalization Office to appeal and apply for abatement, I went to talk with Mr. Rick Burger, Shannon, the director. He was not there at the time, and the deputy told me to leave my number, and he was going to call me by. When I got home, he called me right away. And now, I discussed with him what we have encountered. And then, all he had to say is, it is the law, so since we did not register our home, we cannot qualify for abatement. And so, how, as a new person coming to South Dakota, how do I get to know about this law? He said, well, it is not their responsibility to let us know. It is my, as a property owner, my responsibility to know the law. And all they can do is to put a little piece of paper in the mail to the address, whether it get there. It'll know. They are hoping that it get there. And so, that's one of the aspects of that notification. If it is being sent to the property owner, I think it should be like either a certified mail or something like that, that they will know that the owner received it and signed it, that they got it, and it was clear for them to go through. But nothing like that is being done. If you put a piece of mail in the mail to go to somebody, you don't know whether they're going to get it or not. So, like I said from the beginning, I... This is the main point of my coming here. I was working at a hospital, but because of this matter, and I'm not only here to represent myself and my family, and I'm not only here to appeal for abatement, but I'm appealing for reformation in the law, that it should be clear and transparent. The equalization office, in my opinion, should be able to tell people during the assessment, the person that is coming to do their appraisal, should be able to communicate with the owner of that house or that property and say, this is your home, are you going to live there? Ask that question. If the person tells you, no, I'm not going to live there, then you can default their home as non-una-occupy. If the person tells you, yes, I'm going to live there, and they tell them that they need to fill out the form and send it to the equalization office. But nothing like that will communicate it to us. And to our surprise, our home was listed as non-una-occupied since 2016. And we have been paying the 20% above our property value, assessment value, which brought us to the point in that there are many people that we have spoken with who have had the same problem around here. And even, in fact, it was brought to our attention because this person had the same problem way back, that he was listed as non-una-occupied when he himself built his home and nobody told him that he has to register his home as una-occupy. When I went to the equalization office to appeal and apply for abatement, I went to talk with Mr. Rick Burger, Shannon, the director. He was not there at the time. And the deputy told me to leave my number and he was going to call me by. When I got home, he called me right away. And now I discussed with him what we have encountered. And then all he had to say is, it is the law, so since we did not register our home, we cannot qualify for abatement. And so how, as a new person coming to South Dakota, how do I get to know about this law? He said, well, it is not their responsibility to let us know. It is my, as a property owner, my responsibility to know the law. And all they can do is to put a little piece of paper in the mail to the address, whether it get there. It'll know, they are hoping that it get there. And so that's one of the aspects of that notification. If it is being sent to the property owner, I think it should be like either certified mail or something like that, that they will know that the owner received it and signed it, that they got it and it was clear for them to go through. But nothing like that is being done. If you put a piece of mail in the mail to go to somebody, you don't know whether they're going to get it or not. So like I said from the beginning, I came here to appeal, or apply, I have applied for abatement. And I came before you because Shannon, the director of equalization, denied us this abatement. And he said, the only way we can work with this is to go, first, we were told to go to the city council and then from there, we will come before you because it is you that will approve either the abatement or deny the abatement for us. And so I thank you very much for having me here. And I know members of the commissioner have the, see the law, but I'm saying this law is not clear and the assessment notice that is being sent to us is not clear. And the commerce property owner would not go into detail, reading the fine print to know what they are to do or what not to do. So we are just asking.
Thank you, Mr. Diggler.
For reformation and abatement.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to have Shannon come up and he's going to show a part of the process and then we'll, if any of the commissioners have questions for you, I'll bring you back up, Mr. Diggler.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Shannon, if you could kind of tell what the assessors do and some of the questions I had yesterday, I think for the general public, so they understand the process in which equalization works and how you assess and basically our process.
Okay, all right. Holly, where are the documents? Right here?
In the new construction as well, Shannon. So we have an understanding of how that starts and what happens. Thank you.
So first, a few introductory comments. This is an abatement request from the property owner. It doesn't come from my office. A lot of the abatement requests that you see are normal processes that we do, that my office brings to you and this one comes to you from the property owner. It has already been to the city of Rapid City because it's located in the city limits. The city had denied it at that level. It comes to you now, like any property that's in the city limits, it goes there and then comes here. I did not deny an abatement request. Once the assessment notice is mailed, my office doesn't change any values. We can't change this year's assessments that are already done, nor can we go back and change previous years. This abatement process is the only way a tax bill can be changed. So we start with a law. I was asked to provide some documents on the screen here. And I've got first here, the law or the primary law that deals with the owner occupied classification. And I highlighted the introductory sentence here. This is SDCL 101340, eligibility for owner occupied classification. And the first sentence says, to be eligible for a property classification pursuant to 101339, the owner of each owner occupied dwelling as defined in 101339 shall submit a certificate to the county director of equalization stating such person is the owner and occupant of the dwelling as of the assessment date pursuant to 1062 and that the dwelling is the owner's principal place of residence. This is the focal point of this complaint here. We do have an application for the owner occupied classification for the property owner for 2019 and then the property will be owner occupied going into the future. He has provided that, but for the previous years, we did not get that application. This is the state law that sets up that requirement, that there be that application. Now, property owner referenced statute doing, having to do with fraud with the owner occupied class. That statute sets up a penalty if somebody misrepresents their principal place of residence. It's not a penalty for not applying. There is no penalty for not applying. There is a penalty in a process if you lie on an application. The next document I got, the property owner referenced, there's two pages to this. This is our assessment notice. Maybe I'll scroll up to this part of it. I don't know what you call first page, second page. When we mail them out, they come front and back. This gives you your assessed value. There's a reason this is called an assessment notice. It is a notice to the property owner that we have this property under this legal description assessed in your name with this value as the assessed value. We also note the owner occupied classification on the assessment notice. If it is not owner occupied, it says not owner occupied instead of owner occupied. This one, for a sample, is mine. Whenever I use an example of an assessment notice, I always use my property. I don't want somebody complaining that I put their property up on the screen, so I use mine. So that's why mine says owner occupied. This is the other side of that assessment notice. And state law requires that we put the verbiage up here, having to do with the appeal process. This tells you that if you think there's something wrong with your assessment, you can appeal it. There's a deadline to appeal, how you appeal and who you appeal to. We have added the comments that I have highlighted down there. And I think the property owner read this. Important, if this is your principal residence, please review this notice to verify that your property is classed as owner occupied before the March 15 deadline. We're required by law to mail assessment notices by March 1st. We tend to get them out early, at least the last several years we have, about a week early. Property owner receives that assessment notice by about March 1st, but has until the 15th. If he notices this, that it says non-owner occupied, to get an application to us and correct that if it needs to be done. There was a mention of certified mail. We do not mail assessment notices certified mail. I think that would be an incredible expense to the county if we did. We try to mail them as cheaply as possible. And Commissioner Haddock asked me to put this up here. This is our process we go through when our appraisers are out looking at property. Our appraisers and the property owner referenced a conversation with them. We go out and we look at a house. In this case, it was a brand-new house. The first inspection we had of this property, it was a foundation and not much more. So the first year, 2016, was a very low assessment because there was no house there. There was a foundation, maybe a little bit more than that. Property couldn't have been occupied at that time, but there was still some value. That was the first year. The next year, we came back to follow up to see if the construction was complete and property owner wasn't home. That's frequently the case. When the property owner is not home, we leave a card on the door. And we do that for two reasons. If the neighbor says somebody was walking around your house, took a picture of it, okay, we want the property owner to know who that was and why we were there. We also note some things we assume about the house because when we're standing out on the sidewalk, we have to make some assumptions, that the interior looks as good as the exterior, that there is a basement, maybe the basement's finished and I guess at how many bedrooms and bathrooms based on the size of the house and what's typical for the neighborhood. And we mark those assumptions and we put it on that card. And then the card says, please call our office or contact our office if you have any questions or to verify this information. And evidently, that's what happened. The property owner called back when they found the card and we reviewed that information. And that's what that appraiser was looking at. This is just the data that our appraisers are collecting. How big is the house? What kind of condition is it in? Does it have a garage, a basement? Our appraisers are only looking at that data. They don't know if the property qualifies for an owner occupied classification. They don't know if it's the owner that lives there, if the owner has a second home, the primary residence might be somewhere else. They don't even know when they're out there. And then the camera system they're working with in the office doesn't even tell them if the property is classed owner occupied. That's a tax issue. What we're, what our appraisers are looking at is just collecting property data to eventually appraise the property when we're back in the office. Now, what we do to inform the public about the owner occupied classification, of course we put it on the assessment notice. That's part of the information you should be looking at on your assessment notice. The tax bill also has it. The tax bill indicates it. We put an ad in the Rapid City Journal at the same time we mail assessment notices. So hopefully people see that. We've got an explanation on our website. We allow the public to apply for the owner occupied classification on our website. And to my knowledge, we're the only county in South Dakota where you can go on our website and fill out that application instead of having to fill out a paper form or come to our office. We were at least the first county to do that. We've set up a process in our office where if a property transfers ownership, logically is going to lose the owner occupied classification because the owner now doesn't live there anymore. We mail a letter to the new buyer asking, should this property be owner occupied? If so, contact us or fill out an application, go to our website, whatever. That's a process when a property transfers ownership. Title companies and realtors work with the public. I don't think they have to, but many, many good realtors will call their clients at the end of the year because we hear from these people. Realtor called them, says, I need to come in and ask about the owner occupied thing. Title companies will give an application for owner occupied at every closing. So if there's a closing on a purchase, even on a new property, sometimes there's a closing at financing, that's provided. Again, I don't think they have to, but I think it's good that they do that. We do what we can to tell the public. We pay for that ad in the Rapid City Journal. I've contacted the news, KOTA. I've, I talk to realtors all the time. A couple of times a year, I'm talking to realtors about this. Try to get the word out as much as we can. But when our appraisers are out there, our appraisers are only looking at property data. They don't know if the property owner qualifies for owner occupied or disabled veteran or the elderly assessment freeze, and they don't want to make any assumptions like that. They can't look at somebody that's elderly and say, would you qualify for an elderly assessment freeze? Is your income low enough? We provide that stuff in the office. We have brochures, access on our website, but our appraisers are not looking at that.
Thank you, Shannon. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Drew.
Shannon, Shannon, on the, on your property where it says owner occupied, have you highlighted that with the yellow or is that highlighted on that form?
Oh, that's just for this example.
Okay, okay.
If we did that, any color to that?
Yeah.
Costs significant.
I understand. Thank you.
How about underlining it? That costs extra?
Well, it seems like anything we do costs extra. What we do is, is we work with an outside company. In this case, Wells Fargo prints and mails our assessment notices for us, has for several years. And once we've created a format, they give us a price, so much per. We start tweaking it, it always costs more. I don't know how much more underlining would, certainly an option.
Sometimes in bold kind of refers you to something you need to go, hits your eye a little better, but Commissioner Drew.
I'm up for, I'm up for suggestions, but I got to tell you that there's this much space there and we have to work within that.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew, follow up.
Shannon, you mentioned that when you, when a property is transferred, that they receive a letter. So would Martin not have received a letter when he purchased that raw property?
No, because we're doing that on properties that have homes on them. It was a bare piece of land. There was no house on it. We don't send a letter for a commercial property that, because a commercial property can't be classed as owner occupied, bare land can't be classed as owner occupied. So no, there wouldn't have been that. We limit the letters to only the properties that would qualify anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we are working with planning and zoning to create some kind of brochure, something that when a property owner comes in and applies for a building permit, there will be an explanation of the owner occupied application, the tax process, the assessment. Plan on working in the next couple of months to create something then. Now, that property at that time won't qualify for owner occupied because you just got a building permit, you don't have a house yet, but at least something to inform the property owner of a new house, of the assessment, the tax process and the owner occupied classification.
Follow up, Commissioner Drew, or you're good?
Nope, thank you.
Commissioner Roskinett?
Shannon, it's my understanding that the appraisers do not have any, basically any communication with the property owner regarding occupied or unoccupied. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that, no. We, the appraisers answer questions of all kinds. They, property owners will ask about anything. They, our appraisers know what it takes to qualify and apply for owner occupied, but they take questions about all different kinds of things.
This letter was written by you, February 14, 2019. It was the abatement for Wayne Schwer. And it says, Mr. Schwer called our office on October 25, 2017, in response to a door hanger left on his property and spoke with an appraiser in our office. Our appraiser advised him of their owner occupied classification deadline and the disabled veteran exemption deadline. So to me, there's a situation where an appraiser advised, which is not assessing. And if that would have happened with Mr. Diggler, just a simple statement, we wouldn't be here today, in my opinion.
In that situation, the property owner asked about the veterans exemption and the owner occupied classification. He was asking about applying, so the appraiser provided him with the deadlines for those
I understand. Thank you.
Any other follow up?
I'd like to speak to Martin once.
Okay. Let's have Lloyd or Gary, you have any more questions for Shannon?
Uh.
Commissioner Lucroy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I look at, look at this and this comes to us quite often. I've known several people that had purchased properties and they say, I did not know. And I think a lot of times what happens is you get this and you overlook it. And I totally believe that because I've been in other communities where instead of owner occupied, non-owner occupied, what's expressed is there's a discount for owner occupied and non-owner occupied. Then people pay attention. It seems like when you say discount, I've just, I know of one community, that's how they, they worded the assessment part, it's a discount for being owner occupied and then people pay attention. I, this, all my experiences, Shannon, just as you said, with the realtors, closing costs, title companies, they've always expressed owner occupied and that discount. But I do know just for myself, I let the wife handle all these, so I don't look at them. So I mean, and I think that might happen in other families too. You know, one person looks at them, they read through them and they don't really see all that detail. So I do see that happening. But I just wanted to express that part. I think I've talked to you about that before or somebody about, in other communities, they call it a discount for owner occupied and then that brings attention to their, to make them stop and make that phone call.
Anything else, follow up? Commissioner Roskinett?
So we're still in the process of working with IT to, I've got some suggestions that might resolve or enhance the process, putting that statement on the other side where there's a lot of room. And like Lloyd indicated, let them know that there is a benefit to owner occupancy and the difference between owner occupancy and non-owner occupancy, because a lot of people look at that and say, well, what difference does it make? I think the first thing people look at when they get their assessments, their assessed value and that, in my situation, that's about, I do not read all the fine print. It reminds me of an airplane ticket or applying for a credit card.
I understand.
So the transparency, I think, is a major issue and especially in new construction. There's some, I think the county, in my opinion, failed to, for a new, for somebody that moved here from Wisconsin, I think there could have been more transparency. I don't expect Martin to know South Dakota codified law.
We have time before tax bills are mailed and assessment notices mailed next year. So I plan on... year, so I, I plan on talking about wording on this.
Thank you. Any other questions for Shannon, board? If not, oh.
Just one more comment.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I know the word discount's probably not a good way to, to word that, but I seen the look on your face. No, I, because that's, it probably isn't the real correct way to put that when it comes to the assessments and so forth, but.
No, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
No more making funny faces. Just kidding.
I, I was actually just wondering if there was a problem that his wife deals with all of that stuff. I wondered if that's where he was going with that.
That's where the funny look came from, boy. All right, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon.
Mr. Diggler, please. Thank you, sir, for coming back up for us. Question, Commissioner?
Yes, Martin. When did you first discover the owner occupied and non-owner occupied, the difference between the two?
This past January, the beginning of this year. A friend of ours, Akeem, and then when we're talking about how we built our home, and again, to just add, and he talked about this, the, the title company or realtor and stuff, that this is a special issue that is different. Yes, the realtor might be involved or telling you to explain this to you, but there are some circumstances that people might not have realtor involved in their building process, or even a title company involved, and that was the case for us. We did not have a realtor. We did not have a title company. Nobody came to tell us about this law. We not got to hear about, learn about owner occupied or non-owner occupied this going January. When this friend told us about this, then that was the time we went online, called the equalization office right away, to check on our property, to see what they have our home owner. And then when we, when we, we checked, or when it, when it checked, it told us that we were registered as non-owner occupied. We're like, "How could that be? Our address is the same, and you mailed this, this assessment to this address that you have as non-owner occupied, and how can you not know that we are living there?" And, but again, to add to what he said, that, um, they cannot color that little sentence or bullfated. It will cost them a lot of money. It's going to cost the city a lot of money to do that. Twenty percent added to the property owner assessment value. What is that for that owner, the, the property owner? It's a lot of money coming from your pocket, but it's not, I mean, it is a lot of money for the, for the city or the county to just color that to bring attention, or to move that sentence to a bigger area and make it larger so that people have attention to. To my view, again, I thank you for having me, having me here. There have, there have been a lot of people who have had this, this problem, and they have not taken a step to come before you guys for it to be solved. And each time you guys are faced with this. And I think there should be transparency, there should be clear, and the city should know. People, you put ad in the newspaper, not everybody receives newspaper. Not everybody receives newspaper to read.
Thank you, Martin.
Martin, when you first contacted the assessor's office, was it to a concern about your assessed value, or was it a concern about your classification?
When we called in January to, to, we called about this owner occupied issue, because the friend told us, and then we're like, "Oh, we didn't know about this. We better call the office to, to inquire about this." And when we called, that's when they said, "Oh, you are, you are registered as non-owner occupied."
So you, your contact with the county assessor was not to complain about the amount that you were being assessed, it was to inquire about owner occupancy versus non-owner occupancy?
It was not about the amount. We, I believe that the officers are put in the, in the office or in the power to, yes, enforce the law. And as a citizen or people who live in a county or in a state, we are required to pay our tax. The task is, if we say we are going to own a property, we are responsible. So if we are there, to my view, the city is charging me, saying, "This is your assessed value. This is why you should pay for your property as tax." So I see it, and like, "Okay, there's no way around this." I did not ask any question. I just said, "Okay, I have to pay my tax. That's my responsibility." Because as a believer, our law said we should respect the government and pay what belonged to the government, and that's what I believe in.
Do you have a follow up?
But the government cannot take away my little sense beyond what I supposed to pay to them. To me, it's not fair. If you say, "This is what I supposed to pay, I should pay that," it should be clear. But don't, don't charge me more than what I supposed to be.
Okay.
Thank you, Martin.
I have a question. So Martin, you had this assessed notice, you had this property, basically your assessment, and then your tax bill. We, we not only have problems with occupied and non-owner occupied, people aren't looking at their, anything on their tax bill. They're looking at how much they have to pay, kind of like you were doing. They weren't reading their tax bills. And that'd be for both, and the assessment and the property taxes. So it's not just you. So we have tried to correct those issues. But we also say, "You had three years to look at this. You're new." I guess if I was new and didn't understand the taxes, I would have came in and had somebody explain this to me. Instead of, some of that's got to be your personal responsibility. Meaning, when you don't know something, you should call. And they do put their phone number on here. So when you got your tax assessment, your property taxes, you never called anybody. So you're telling me, sir, you're a very nice man, by the way, to visit with you on the phone. But I also believe in personal responsibility. There's a point where you have to take your own responsibility and say, "I didn't understand this. I don't understand the taxes in South Dakota. Shannon, can you explain that to me?" Or maybe even you ask the question to your appraiser. Can you explain this? Because I can understand the first year this happening to you, sir, you know, and then you not understanding, and then paying taxes. But for three years, there's got to be a point where you have to read your tax bill and understand what's on there. So some of that's got to be back on you, instead of saying, "Now, we could, we could change our process," which we're going to do with the, what makes sense with the new building permits, and maybe we could work with the city on some of that. But I'll just say, there's a lot of opportunities. There's two papers here. There's a point where you could have called. So there's a lot of areas where I see, when I bring the appraisers and stuff, they have asked, but they get a sheet, and not, not all the time are people there. So some of those questions could be asked, but first and most, their job is to assess your property. Now, as I've noticed on most of my people, they have to come back, and what happens is they didn't read their tax bill right. Whether it be the seniors I've helped, or the veterans I've helped. I had to bring the assessors, who have been very good at helping me why and where and how, but they didn't know on the top what, you know, what was happening until I took them in there and showed these guys their tax bills. So my bottom line, sir, is I feel your pain, in a sense, but I also understand there's some personal responsibility of you for at least three years. Like I said, it was, if it was for like one year, you didn't understand, and you were new, that'd be different. But this was three, so.
I, I thank you for mentioning that. Yes, I would take some responsibility in our line, but like I said, and a lot of people said, when the assessment comes, and then you're just focused on your dollar amount that you need to pay, and assuming that the county or the state is doing everything is clear, and this is why they sent to you, this is your responsibility, and that's why you focus on to pay your tax. And so, yes, I did not take the initiative to, to say, "Oh, I have to call and understand what this is and that is." But also, I feel like this, the county or the equalization, they are doing their job, so it is fair. So I did not have any question or concern at that, when I received this, to ask, to call and ask them. I was just focused on paying my tax.
Thank you, Mr. Diggler.
Madam Chair.
Focus, uh, focus. Commissioner, Commissioner LaCroy.
I'm going to make a motion, and I'd like the floor to get a second. I'd make a motion to deny the application for parcel 54748 for the taxes of 2016, 17, and 18, the amount of 4398.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion and a second by Drews to deny. We do have one more speaker, if we could. Thank you, Mr. Diggler. Ms. Amanda?
Thank you.
Your name?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Amanda Scott, and I'm on the Rapid City Council. And since this is being heard today, and I happen to be in the audience, if, I appreciate you allowing me, because the recommendation coming back is just as simple that the Rapid City Council denied this. If you, any of you Commissioners had taken the opportunity to stream the discussion that was had at that time, I just wanted to update you to make sure that you had all the information, since you're hearing this today. So the Rapid City Council, there was a lot of discussion on this issue. Mr. Diggler came before, said many of the same things that he's indicated to you Commissioners today. And it's a great discussion, and as you all recognize, there are always those property owners that slip through the cracks for whatever reason. And that, the, so I just wanted you to be aware. The Rapid City Council was very sympathetic to Mr. Diggler. The Rapid City Council primarily made the motion to deny is because we knew that the process, which, as was discussed today, and the terms all, often get intermixed. I've even, listening to the hearing today, a lot of the terms were mixed. You have an assessed value that is supposed to represent the property value that could be sold. And then there's a process of equalization, and then there's a process at the state level to get the taxes that are actually figured based on the governmental entities that are charging a mill levy for their budgets that they have to get. There's a lot of different terms, and the Equalization Department does a great job of explaining the entire process, and where the property owners come in to talk about their interaction in the process is only at specific points. So I, I recognize Commissioner LaCroy making the motion to deny. But I just wanted you to be aware, the city council did that because we knew whatever decision or whatever recommendation we made, the ultimate decision is before this body for Mr. Diggler. And I know a lot of times the law directs us, and that is what guided the city council that night, was the law. But I know the Commissioners have some leeway, and as Commissioner Haddock, you indicated, you know, Mr. Diggler today is asking for three years or all three years for a consideration. Since he did come in in 2019, I would put it before this board that even if you could consider going back one year and giving him some break, because he did recognize and finally did come in and do the owner occupied. That is totally in this body's purview. It is, the decision is ultimately, ultimately up to you. But like I said, I was in the audience today, listening to you, and since there was a recommendation from the city council, I just wanted to kind of let you know that many of the city council members were very sympathetic with Mr. Diggler, because it was an unusual transaction. Because our realtors and our title companies and the website for the county and the Equalization Department does an excellent job trying to work with property owners as they acquire property. This one just seemed to fall through the crack. Thank you for letting me talk today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Jay, you're next.
Thank you, Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. I appreciate the comments there, and these are sensitive and emotional matters. But I guess I would like to provide this as some commentary. The county did not violate any law. They didn't break any law. Can there always be more and more and more notice? Absolutely, and we should strive to do that. That's a good idea. But I think we've done quite a bit, and probably more than most the counties in the state, quite frankly. From a legal standpoint, I have to remind the commission that this is a request for an abatement under SDCL 1018-2. And under 1018-2, it gives, I think there's three statutes, like subsections 7, 8, 9, or 8, 9, 10, something like that. And the exceptions to the owner occupied are, I think, under 106A, dealing with elderly, and you have to meet some criteria. And if you miss the deadline, you can come before the board and get an, an exception to that deadline and get to apply after the fact. But that's not the case here. The other one is, I think, 10440, which is the one that Commissioner Roskinet mentioned the other day. That was for a partial exemption on a disabled veteran, and that's an exception. And that's not our case here today. And the last one, I think, is the 101340, which is the issue here today, but that one has to be the temporary duty assignment in the military, which also is not our case today. I bring those up because under 1018-2, which is the authority of this board to grant abatements, you may grant an abatement, but only if all of that criteria has been met. And then and only then can you grant the abatement. So as I stand here today, I would tell you, you lack the authority, frankly, legally, to grant this request. Going back one year, two years, three years, I don't see that the authority exists to do so.
Thank you, Jay.
It's not discretionary.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions for the Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you. I, I don't think anybody, as Amanda put it, disagrees that we don't feel bad for someone that this happens to. But I can also say, you know, as a commission, there is no one size fits all. There is no one magic thing that we can do that's going to fix every situation that comes up. We do one thing, and then it's not, you know, then something else will come up, and we'll have to deal with that. I, I think we're, our Equalization Department and us as Commissioners have done a very well job trying to communicate that, more so than other communities. That doesn't mean, I've heard some good opinions on here so far, and I think we're going to step ahead of other communities again next year by some different stuff coming up. But, you know, I, I threw the motion on the floor for the reason that I think legally, we've done everything we can, and if, and I think, as Jay just put it, you know, we don't meet the requirements to allow an abatement. So, but I, we've given this a lot of time. We, we spent over and a half hour on, on this, and, and I hope Mr.
Diggler.
I got it. Martin Diggler feels that he, he had his day to, to speak his, his opinion. And, and I think you've seen the concern from this commission that they're going to move forward and try and do some more different things. So I just wanted to thank you for expressing your concerns and bringing it forward. And, and I can guarantee you that this commission and, and the equalization has been, even before you come up, been looking at other possible ways to make it more transparent and more easier to read.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews?
Councilmember Scott, I appreciate you coming here. Now, this, this means that you probably should be back often, visiting us. For Mr. Diggler, I, I really appreciate you bringing this to us. You had a very sound board to, to stand on, and I appreciate you bringing that. Obviously, this not only has impacted you, but probably has impacted others that we have not heard from. And so, and I'm going to take Shannon's comment that we're working on trying to improve and making a better notification in the future. Not that it hasn't been sufficient, and according to law at this point in time, but I think anything that we can do to better inform the public is great. So I want to thank you all for your participation. And that's, that is why I second the, the motion of Commissioner LaCroy, is I just don't think that we are in a position to do an abatement relative to this property. But I thank you.
Thank you. And the follow up for Commissioner Roskinet? Do you have anything?
Well, yeah, I-
Well, yeah, I, being new to the office, I just felt that it was my obligation to do whatever I could for taxpayers in my district. So Martin, it's really been enjoyable working with you, the emails. And we are gonna make some changes, uh, in the next year. That's my goal. But I'm gonna have to, uh, take the advice of the State's Attorney and, uh, do what I feel, understand the, my limitations, uh, accord, uh, according to the state law.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Roskineck. I was with Ross, uh, Commissioner Roskineck, and, um, Martin, he did due diligence by you, um, by all his work, um, working with the Planning Department and Equalization. So, um, thank you for all your work you've done with Martin and, and learning the process, and then, um, actually adding to our process a little bit. I believe the Equalization Office and our county actually does due diligence by people, um, by putting, even with equalization, Shannon, we have brought forward for him to put on his website how your property is assessed, how taxes work. Um, today, we did the presentation for the public, um, also, so they'd understand maybe one more piece added to it as people could see this on TV, or it could be in the newspaper, where to look at your, um, occupied or non-owner occupied. Just anything we have done, we have moved forward with, with equalization in our county, uh, treasures, our auditor's office and different things. And we are listening, Mr. Digler, and you've just helped us with one more step, even though, uh, we cannot, I don't know, we haven't voted yet. But, um, I think by, by the due diligence of, of this board, I think you did a good job today. And thank you, Amanda, for your, your talk as well. So, anyway, uh, we do have a motion by LaCroy, second by Drews.
Second, Madam Chair.
And the other discussion, Commissioner Roskineck.
Martin, did you wanna speak?
Come on up, sir. Thank you for your time today.
Again, thank you for having me here. I know, uh, the position that you guys, uh, you all are in, and I think it's the attorney for the, for the, um, for the county that I spoke. And I know, yes, he said, uh, my case do not fall underneath, uh, any of the category where that abatement is allowed. I understand that. I went through, um, the county website, I read the, the codified law and where, um, abatement can be approved or denied and, and where people can be penalized. But again, the law, yes, the law is the law, but if there is some, um, area that is not being, that is not clear, I think you all have the responsibility to visit that. The attorney can address that, and there should be some clarification and exchanges made to help the common people that do not read the law. We are now always in a position to have attorney to come speak for us, but if you are defending the law, the law should be clear for the common people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Martin.
So we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Digler, thank you, Shannon. Number eighteen, items from Highway Department, Superintendent Joe Miller. Number eighteen A, please.
Morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Highway Superintendent. Uh, first up, we have, uh, award recommendations for five new tandem axle trucks. We opened bids on, oh boy, last Monday, I don't know what the date was, twenty-fifth of Ma- March, I believe. The lowest bidder, uh, lowest bidder that, uh, met not all, but most of our specifications was Eddie's Truck Center with Freightliners. Model, uh, one fourteen S D at a hundred and nine thousand, uh, nine eighty-three per unit. The rest of the, I had it all organized, give me a second here.
What's that?
What's that?
What you looking for?
I must have misplaced my, uh...
You need this, Joe?
Yeah. Thank you. So as I said, the lowest bidder with, uh, the least amount of deviations, they all had some deviations. Some were able to live with and some were not. Um, Eddie's was able to get us the two trucks that we requested by the end of July, um, and the remaining three by the end of August. The other three, or the other two bidders, um, were three hundred days out, um, and then August and December. Um, the reason we, we chose that delivery date, we have to have time to, to build them. We build all these trucks, we use them for several different, uh, different uses, I guess. Use them as a gravel truck, plow truck, be able to set them up with, uh, all sorts of different things. For an example, we've got one in our shop, and it's been there, I think, six weeks getting, um, a sander put on it. So it does take some time for us to get them set up. So to be able to swap our old trucks into the plow trucks and put these into, to gravel, um, we do need that time. And, and July thirty-first is kind of the latest we would go to, to at least get two of those trucks back into service. And then, uh, that's the, uh, Eddie's Truck Centers. The lowest bid at, uh, North Central International at a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-four. The, we did not choose these guys simply because they were over three hundred days out on their delivery date, so.
Thank you. Any discussion or motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for clearing that up. When I was looking through this, I, I was, I think that's what I hit too, was, is the delivery date. One, you know, several of them gave you three hundred, and some had some other ones, but it, it looked like the one that you chose had given you some specific dates. At least you can get started on a couple, and then the other ones are gonna be coming, so, um, thanks for clearing that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Motion by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen B, tires and tubes purchases.
Uh, the next one, we, we purchased tires and tubes off the state contract. Um, I have those prices here, and we get a, a fairly great discount. We've been doing this for a number of years. Um, we feel buying off the state contract, we get our lowest prices, um, so I just asked for a motion to approve.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Roskineck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Bulk diesel and gas product purchases.
Uh, this is the same thing, uh, as the tires and tubes. We've been purchasing off the state contract for a number of years. The, there's two bidders here in the, the area, Moil Petroleum and MG Oil. MG Oil delivers to our Rapid City, Hill City, and New Underwood divisions, um, and Moil Petroleum delivers out to Wall.
Okay, motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll be abstaining from this, as, uh, my wife works for one of the companies.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Roskineck.
Second.
Second by Drews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Commissioner LaCroy. Eighteen D, please.
All right, uh, this is, uh, mailbox policy. Um, so this year, we've hit, uh, some mailboxes as, you know, any year that we have snow, ma- some mailboxes get hit. They're rather too close, or get a little too, or plow drivers get a little too close to them. This was last updated in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's twenty years old. Got quite a few people coming in and, you know, saying this isn't enough to, to cover our cost. And there was actually some, in the old policy, it wasn't quite clear, and we wanted to add some things to it to, to match our snow policy. Couple of the big things to note is we, uh, we upped the, uh, cost to, or the allowance to replace the damaged mailbox to forty dollars. Go online to Menards or go out to Menards and look at any of the, the mailboxes and, you know, not going with the cheapest one, but not going with the most expensive either. They range anywhere from thirty to sixty dollars. Kind of chose that lower middle ground of, of forty dollars to, to replace that with a mailbox that you would see on a county road, basically. Something they can put small packages in and, and able to, to put those small packages in and keep them out of the elements. The other thing would be a post to put that on, a four-by-four, eight-foot-long post, is roughly twenty dollars if you go onto Menards or any other, uh, Lowe's, any of those, to, to check the prices on those. Um, and then another thing that our current policy didn't actually, um, address was the installation. They just gave a flat rate for installation. You know, sometimes the mailbox gets hit off the post, sometimes both the post and the mailbox get hit. Sometimes the post gets hit and the mailbox is still good. So we, uh, we wanted to separate those out for installation. You know, if it's both, you get two hours at twenty dollars an hour to install it. You get one, you get one hour to, to install it at twenty dollars an hour. We did call, reach out to the, uh, the city. Well, um, we also put some information in here that, uh, the payment must be picked up within seven days unless other, otherwise authorized by the highway staff. Connie, our, our office manager, has, uh, requests sitting on her desk from December and January. Just to kind of alleviate some of that, you know, unless they call and get prior authorization from the highway department, seven days, you know, to come pick that up from the highway department. Also has to be reported within forty-eight hours, so we have time to go out and investigate it. Lot of times, um, you know, the snow takes the mailbox off or the post off. If we wait longer than that forty-eight hours, it's pretty hard. If we get another snow in between that, um, it's pretty hard for our staff to tell whether or not the plow actually hit it or not. The last thing, uh, we did reach out to the city on what their policy is. They don't have a written policy in, uh, in hand, I guess is what they said. We reached out to, um, their snow removal operations manager, Dale. And, uh, their practice is, right now, is to replace in kind. And then speaking to Mark, the county did do that years ago, um, but, uh, it costs quite a bit of money. Um, and to keep it consistent, we just wanna update this mailbox policy.
Thank you. Any discussion or motion?
I'm, move to approve.
Second.
Move by Roskineck to approve, and second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I just wanted to...
Or LaCroy, sorry.
I just wanted to take, thank him for looking at those numbers and updating them, because when I was looking at those originals, it's going like, wow. It, it didn't seem like it was up to market, and I think you did a good job of getting it to fair, so they feel compensated to the point where they can actually do it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I have to agree on this policy and other policies that we are having, the highway is stepping up in, uh, policies that we don't have anything for, they have done. And then policies that need updating. So thank you and, uh, Mark and your staff for everything you guys are doing at the county, 'cause it seems like we're moving ahead, and, and that's because of you two as your leadership, so we appreciate it. Item E is seasonal load limits, partial west of Highway seventy-nine, information only.
We gotta vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I just did, just kidding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, sorry about that, item D, or E.
Uh, load limits, uh, just informational only. Um, they went into effect east of Highway seventy-nine, uh, March twentieth, uh, west of Ha- Highway seventy-nine on March twenty-fifth. You know, current conditions, we foresee these going probably till the end of April, which is, uh, April thirtieth. Weather conditions will ultimately, uh, decide when we're able to lift these conditions. We'll lift them sooner if we're able to, but, um, looking at the forecast and kind of looking at the freeze tracks, um, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to do that. The weight limits are seven tons per axle on all county, uh, asphalt surfaces.
Thank you. Uh, next is F, informational on one sixty-fourth Avenue Bridge, please.
Yep, and I have a, a short presentation I'd like to get to before we get to the, uh, the actual bridge. So in lieu of, of this bridge collapsing, um, the highway department went out and performed an inspection on all a hundred and twenty-seven of our bridges, um, that we have. And I just give you, we went out and looked at, uh, bridges out in Wall, and then out in, uh, in New Underwood, Rapid City Divisions, and the, uh, um, Hill City Division. First of all, that's the bridge that collapsed. It's on a hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue. We'll get to that one here a little bit later. Uh, just wanna say thanks to Connie, our office manager, for putting this together for us. Um, she did a, a very good job. And I don't know how many of you have seen the video of the bridge collapse, but here it is. As you can see, if you note over here on the right, you can kind of see these big ice chunks coming here. Ultimately, ice is what took the bridge out. So, um, first up here, um, we have, uh, Hill City, Slate Prairie Road, um, uh, built in nineteen fifty. We went out and just kind of took some pictures of each, you know, couple bridges in each division, just to, to show you guys that we were out there inspecting these bridges. We did, in fact, inspect all a hundred and twenty, Mark, is it a hundred and twenty-seven or a hundred and twenty-eight? It's, I believe it's a hundred and twenty-seven, so.
That's good.
Here's a, uh, Mystic Road Bridge, um, built in nineteen forty. So as you can see, we've got quite some, some old bridges as well. Here's another, uh, bridge over Old Hill City, nineteen seventy-three. Uh, we all know what happened in nineteen seventy-two. The flood took a, a number of bridges out, so we have a lot of bridges that are getting to that, uh, that fifty-year mark. So they're, they're in dire need of some, some upkeep and some revamping. Here's the New Underwood Bridge, um, also built in nineteen seventy-three. You can see, there's some issues here, east side of the bridge, uh, deck where the railing bolts to the beam is spalding, so the, the, the concrete and the asphalt's coming up there. This one is on a hundred and sixtieth Avenue, uh, over the same bridge as the, uh, a hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue Bridge, Box Elder Creek. This is taken a cu- last week, so, uh, you can see that the creek has gone down quite a bit. Here's another, uh, New Underwood Bridge, this is on a hundred and fifty-ninth, um, built in nineteen fifty there. You can see kind of some of the debris and the riprap is, is gone from the wing walls there, or the, the back, the bridge abutments, excuse me. Uh, here's one in, uh, Rapid City, uh, built in sixty-six, another wood bridge, um, the one looks okay. This one built nineteen seventy-two over Spring Creek Road, there's, you know, this one, you can see that this one doesn't have a whole lot of flow underneath it. But in the spring rains, it, it, it often flows quite a bit. Twilight Drive out in Rapid City, out in, uh, out in the valley, you can see the, the wa- the high water that we've recently had. Washed some of this large riprap through the box and to the other side. Here's another one, the water level, shows the water level very high. Note, this is, um, pretty close to Quinn, so you definitely, uh, the Quinn, we've all seen the, the Quinn Dam, uh, breach there. This one, uh, I, I should practice pronouncing that, I guess, uh, Huether Road, uh, built in nineteen forty, another wooden structure that we have. Also another, uh, wooden structure built in nineteen forty. That's, uh, I'll stand for any questions on the, on the presentation there.
Any have any discussion? Commissioner Roskineck?
Say, Joe, when they, uh, some of those bridges that were built in nineteen forty, that look like they're treated timbers, then?
Yes, sir.
So if they replace, if those bridges are replaced, uh, what type of modern construction would they utilize?
Uh, depending on the length, uh, obviously, we'd, we'd like to go with a single-span concrete. Gets all of the, the pillars out of the, the creek, and you don't have to deal with the debris and the ice taking those out.
I assume that's gonna be a lot, lot more expensive than the treated timber.
Absolutely. I don't think that our department has, has bid out a timber bridge in the recent past. Um, so I don't know what the cost on something like that would be.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe? If not, um, on to the next presentation, Joe?
All right, uh, on to the, the a hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue Bridge. Collapsed on March twenty-second due to ice floes taking out the center section or center support section. The ca- the bridge was called in by a, a, a local landowner, he was going to feed cattle on the other side. Heard a loud pop as he went across the bridge, got out to investigate and, and, uh, seen that some of the center supports were, were damaged. It's currently four landowners that, uh, are... It's currently four landowners that uh, are requiring access to the south side of the bridge from um, the north side there. Robert Schaefer, uh, he has uh, racing pigeons. Uh, Lynn Smith has cattle. Zane Brink also has some cattle. And Dale Boydstrom, I I have not talked to him directly. I believe he has cattle on the other side as well. Some possibilities, um, Mark Shock Assistant Superintendent reached out to a contractor that recently built a bridge for us who installed a temporary bridge. To see if we could use that bridge to bridge this gap temporarily. And then keep in mind, these are just some rough numbers and that's why we're here today to seek some direction from you guys as to which way to go. Approximately thirty thousand dollars to install it, um, plus a a monthly rental rate. Um, he has not come to us with a monthly rental rate. We're due to meet with the contractor, was gonna try and do it yesterday, but just didn't have enough time. So hopefully we'll uh, we'll do that later on in the week here. And reaching out to Dustin Willett from uh, Emergency Management, this would not be something that would be covered under FEMA. If that, uh, if we go down that road. Um, the other option, there's a section line that's a currently a minimum maintenance road. Uh, meaning that we go in there and perform maintenance on it. Culvert maintenance, uh, possibly grade it once a year as weather permits. Looking back, we did a road out in Wal, the Wall District, um, two or three years ago. And uh, using an estimate from that and adding some for inflation and and fuel prices and whatnot, twenty-five dollars a foot to to do that three point two miles of road comes to about four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. This is not actually something that would be accounted for in our two thousand and nineteen budget. We would need to get into our reserves to to do that. The nice thing about being able to build or the the road option is it's something that we could do, you know, as the weather allows this later this spring when it dries up, we could get in there and build that road. Um, we'd need about thirteen and a half uh, tons, excuse me, thirteen and a half thousand tons of gravel uh, to do the road six inches thick. Uh, the closest pit to this location would be the Howie Pit. It's approximately uh, ten miles from the location. I'll let Dustin speak to the the FEMA options here a little bit later. Likely, as of this morning, that may or may not be. The bridge replacement, uh, the initial cost, we looked at uh, the four previous bridges that we've uh, contracted out or or bid. Five hundred to six hundred thousand is a a real rough number. Obviously, it depends on the the bid market and um, a lot of different factors would play into that. This would likely be a single span concrete bridge to to get rid of those support sections in the creek. Uh, Box Elder Creek is a very dirty creek, a lot of debris flow down it, ice as well. A box culvert, as as we've done with many other bridges, um, we don't feel that this would be an option here due to the simple fact that uh, the mass area that uh, drains into this Box Elder Creek. There was a uh, single span concrete placed a couple of miles downstream, Sharp Road. That bridge cost four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Mark, was that two years ago?
Two years ago, yes.
So two years ago. Using a single span bridge, as I alluded to earlier, would eliminate ice jams taking this out unless that water's really, really high.
Joe, can you tell me, you told us um, the monthly rate, but how long does it take to build a new bridge?
Uh, that's actually the last thing on my list here. It's depending on, you know, design and what all they need to to do to design it could be anywhere from eight months to a year, six to eight months, you know, probably that eight months on the the quick side, the year on the, on the long side to design it. Um, and then you have to bid it and let it and then probably at least a year to construct it. So you're probably a minimum two years out on building that bridge.
So what did you guys come up with a recommendation that'd be the best possible direction for this board?
Um, you know, as the highway department, uh, we've discussed it at length. We feel would be in the best interest of the county probably to improve that section line, uh, build the road. And then there's no chance of that road getting taken out again. And it would be more cost effective for the county to to improve that section line.
Thank you. Discussion from the board? Commissioner Ross?
Joe, that county section line, is that a a mile then from the, from where the bridge is?
Once you get down to the very end, it would, I believe it's about a half mile. I did not actually measure that.
So it wouldn't be a real hardship on the three landowners that currently don't have access?
So the the, Lynn Smith and uh, I believe Lynn Smith is the one that lives directly on the south side of that bridge. He lives about a half mile from that bridge. And I don't know if he's here today, but he could probably speak a little bit better on that. Be about a ten mile detour from that, from that bridge to go around to get to that bridge. So ten, eleven mile detour.
We do have some speaker requests, if that's okay with the board, if we call them up. Thank you, Joe. Zane Brink on the, would you like to visit with us on the bridge? Come on up, sir. Thank you, Zane. Your name, sir?
I'm Zane Brink. Just recently we acquired property on both sides of Box Elder Creek and was using the bridge pretty extensively up to a couple of weeks ago. Cause we, since we have property on both sides, uh, Lynn and I are basically in the same situation. Since we do have land on both sides, that it would cause a lot of time, a lot of extra resources on our behalf to, cause we would have to go all the way back into New Underwood south and then come down that county road in order to access both sides of our property. Now, I I wrote an email, I, you know, there is a, like everybody, every property has a creek crossing. I mean, but it's, it's not a sustainable one. I mean, just like, we haven't been able to obviously get across this creek, except for last few days that the water level's gone down. So it's, there's options, but they're not, they're not good options. And even putting this road in there is, as I don't feel is a, is a very great option. And I realize the cost incurred by getting the bridge, but it does, it's the way this property has been set up. Although I've only been since December of last year that I've owned this. So I'm not speaking from a whole lot of experience, but from this winter and feeding cows, it, it saves a lot of time. And it it does, you know, I've got hay on both sides. Uh, it's gonna, it definitely, if this bridge is not built, it's gonna cause some hardship on me. I do want to make some comments. I've got the memo here and uh, the the collapse was due because of the ice. We, but what's the ultimate uh, problem of the bridge is that we're talking about a seventy-year-old bridge. And in my primary line of work, everybody, so I build transmission lines and distribution lines. Everybody, we, they take out a lot of lines during the winter time. Everybody comes up and says, oh, this is the worst winter. Well, it's not the worst winter, it's not the worst storm. It's that we're dealing with an aging infrastructure that's not able to uh, see that that type of loads that are standard loads. And so this bridge, I mean, e- even on the pictures in this uh, memo, you could tell that there's a lot of decay on this. And I, this bridge should have been replaced prior to its failure. That's, that's in my opinion. So it's not the, that the ice load, it's just that final. Obviously, it was through the seventy-two flood. And I'm pretty sure there was probably some pretty good flows through that Box Elder Creek during that timeframe that that bridge saw and sustained. Now, would that bridge today see that same flow through there that it saw in seventy-two? Probably not, just because of it's a seventy-year-old bridge. And I think, bottom line, it needs to be taken care of a little bit better than prior to somebody driving a tractor across it and starts to fail. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Zane. Um, Bev Schaefer. Ms. Schaefer, if you'd like to come up, just state your name for us. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Bev Schaefer and we own property on a hundred, or two hundred and thirtieth. And um, we have the one way to get into our property, which is uh, the bridge that is now gone. Um, we, at, sometimes we could use the two hundred and thirtieth street, which comes from the highway to the west. But that road is, um, like Joe said, that is not a maintained road. It is um, mostly gumbo. And if any of you have tried to go through gumbo, you know you are not gonna get very far. Um, there are such, that road is uh, so diverse in the land, from the highs to the lows, that there are some places where there is no way you are gonna get through there. The ironic thing with us is uh, we have property out there and our house is in that building. And um, we had been living in town and this was the the time that we were gonna be moving back there permanently. And I took this week off to move out there permanently. So uh, this really hit us at a bad time. And there's no way for us to get in there. So I am just asking you to help us. And thank you, Deb, so much for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Bev. Your husband, the one I talked to with the pigeons?
Yes.
So I called him and I said, so you have cows out there? And he goes, no, I have pigeons. So I said, okay, so we're gonna fix the bridge for your pigeons? And he goes, well, those pigeons are as much as those cows cost. So I said, how much are your, how much are your pigeons? And he said, about a hundred thousand. And then you don't want to know the comment of the guys, but um, I thought that was pretty interesting. So I told him he owed me um, a visit to see those six to nine thousand dollar pigeons each. So anyway, um, and thank you, Joe, for answering every call and Dustin, um, when I needed you to answer some questions. But your pigeons did make a good laugh until we told them how much they cost. Uh, Dale Bolstad, please, or Boydston, sorry, are you here? Um, any one of the other landowners would like to speak?
I have uh, an email from Dale here.
Did you guys get the email? Yeah, we got it, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir, your name, sir?
My name's Casey Canupi and and I, I wasn't on the list, I guess I didn't get put on. But I'm a landlord that is affected too by the, by the bridge. We have land um, just to the south. We're not on the creek, but uh, about a half mile south, right at the end of the one sixty-fourth Avenue. Um, and I, I, I just want to uh, to voice my opinion that I think the bridge would be a much better option than trying to uh, to build a road. I, I know you referenced uh, maybe a road and wall and I don't know if the conditions are the same or not, but this, there would be quite a bit to go into to fixing this road. And uh, one thing that wasn't mentioned in your proposal was the maintenance of three and a half miles of road too. And I was just, I think that should be added in also, so.
Thank you, sir. We have another landowner? And your name, sir? Up here, sir?
Um, I've just uh-
Now your name, sir?
Lynn Smith.
Thank you, sir.
The, the bridge that crosses the creek there, I usually cross eight to ten times a day from the house to where I calve. And, you know, eight times a day going down and around is gonna be, you know, hundred and sixty miles of driving a day for me. So I don't know, it's, I just feel that the, the bridge is the option.
Thank you, sir. Just a suggestion of the board, um, would it be good to continue this so we could go out and look? And Joe could show us the road that he's talking about, um, the option with the bridge? That way can, we can kind of get a feel of the area and what option we're going with? Just, just a suggestion?
Question.
Commissioner Drews?
So the bridge that they're referring to is the temporary bridge rather than the permanent bridge? Is that what we're talking about or are you talking about a permanent bridge?
Permanent.
From the landlord's perspective? So my question then would be, um, we're gonna do the permanent bridge and what I understand you to say, Joe, is that this could take up to possibly two years before we could have a permanent bridge in?
Absolutely correct.
About a year, yeah.
And I'm not hearing a lot of support by the landlords of developing that road behind.
Correct.
And so then would we be talking primarily as a temporary bridge in the meantime?
That would be an option, correct. You know, another option is we grade that section line to to get it passable. Um, you know, I don't throw gravel on it. You know, Mark could probably speak to a little bit better to that uh, with his experience. But um, you know, it all depends on the spring we have and if we, how much moisture we get, right? You can go out there and blade it and make it look nice one day, but as soon as you drive down it, uh, Mark and I, the, the night of this split, uh, bridge collapse, we did try to make it to the other side of this bridge to to put some uh, bridge close signs and we didn't make it very far. We made it to probably about two miles down that section line and there's just no bottom to it. So temporary bridge for for two years, I don't, we don't know the cost on that yet. I don't know if that's a, a good option for the county, um, looking forward as well, so.
Just a suggestion as well, um, maybe you could make it so they could use the road temporarily, not building up to standards, just enough so they could, they might be traveling for a while until you get that bridge built as an option. I mean, how much would that make it so, you know, you'd have to make it so the road, not up to county standards, but enough so that people could use it until you got the bridge built? Is that a lot of money as well, just to make it somewhat?
To make it somewhat passable, you, you know, you're gonna have to put some gravel on it. Um, and you know, you're gonna probably lose that gravel without having any base underneath it. So you're gonna be throwing gravel away as well as, as the time to maintain it. Cause it's gonna take one good rainstorm and it's gonna be destroyed with a couple of people driving down it again.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner LaCroy?
I, you know, I I kind of struggle with this. I mean, you did some great work with this and we, I I know the residents would like a bridge back there. But as one of the reports said, is it needed to be replaced and, you know, because of some of the financial uh, restraints that we have not having the will tax and getting some of the big money, that slowed us down on replacement on a lot of our bridges. You know, and so now we're looking at, from the numbers that I'm gathering, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to do a bridge to service three, three residents. Or do a road, do a road that's gonna be there permanently, but it's gonna create a havoc for one that's gonna have to drive a hundred and sixty miles a day. This is just kind of gathering my thoughts from what I've, I've heard folks. And and I've got to be able to support and and be able to tell the the taxpayers we did the right thing with that amount of money. Do we go, maybe we do need a little time to figure whether we do that road or we do that bridge? Because a temporary bridge is still gonna cost us even more money. And I can guarantee it, we're gonna have some unhappy people with the amount of money being spent on one bridge that services three residents. Where the, when we can do a road that we can maintain, what we know is not gonna wash out like a bridge. So those are my thoughts. So I, I'm kind of with what I've heard is you wanted to continue this for two weeks and if people wanted, I'm supportive of continuing if the residents, if I have to make a decision today, I will, but I mean, uh, that's-
Joe, what do you think?
And again, this was informational only, just looking for some more direction. These are real enough, rough numbers, you know, we haven't had a contractor out there to to look at that bridge or an engineering firm to look at that bridge, get us a number on that.
Well, I personally would like to go look at, I would like, I'm gonna travel the hundred and sixty miles. I want to see where they have to go and kind of what, what that entails, some of that stuff. And show me the road and I'm sure the commissioners are on board. With kind of, the numbers are rough and it's informational, but Commissioner Ross Connect?
I agree with Deb. Uh, I want to go out there and and uh, I can't make a decision here until I get out there and touch and feel and actually see what the conditions are. And- And on the temporary bridge, it says installed at a cost of 30,000, and we don't know what the monthly fee would be. Is that, would there be a cost to uninstall it too? Or is that 30,000 just to install it?
I can't answer that. I, I believe it's, you know, Mark may be able to answer that a little better. He talked to the contractor. Mark?
Morning, Mark Shaw, finished County Highway. I, I did talk with the contractor that has the temporary bridge. It's 60 feet long, and the existing bridge that's on 164th is 67 feet long. So he would have to drive some pile to make it work and probably some sheet pile to narrow up the creek, creek channel to make this work. So the $30,000 cost was just for installation. There would be a monthly lease fee on top of that, which like Joe said, was undetermined at the time. He, he hinted that it wouldn't be a lot of money, but we don't have that figure right now.
We have Dustin that needs, maybe that can help with some of the costs. I don't know, Dustin, Joe had talked about maybe putting it under disaster or with FEMA or something to save some costs if we ended up maybe doing a bridge? Or does it save us on the road? How does that work? Dustin, please?
So, good morning, Commissioner Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So let me preface this next discussion by saying that it is imperative that this board does not make a decision based on whether or not they think they're going to get FEMA reimbursement. That's, that is not an appropriate path to take for, for the FEMA disaster declaration process. So I just need to make that clear upfront that, that this board should make a decision based on the merits of the bridge or the road or the money that you're willing to commit, not on whether or not FEMA is going to come and, and make that an eligible project. With that being said, the costs, the rough costs for replacing that bridge, what was damaged in this or what was destroyed in this, this event, this flooding and ice flow event, was the bridge. So when we move forward, if we move forward with this, the, the first step would be a local disaster declaration based on the amount of money in damages that was incurred when we lost that bridge. The, our threshold for Pennington County is $3.78 per capita, so about just under 182,000, or I'm sorry, $382,000 is, is what we have to have in damages to be eligible for a disaster declaration. The disaster declaration that we're working under is the blizzard and flooding that, that has occurred over the last several weeks, so the period is still open. The state is under a, an emergency declaration because of all the flooding statewide. So if Pennington County chose to move forward with a disaster declaration, we would be lumped in with the rest of South Dakota and this flooding event that is continuing. So the state of South Dakota will not apply to Washington for a disaster declaration until our flooding is over. So they have 30 days after the event is over to make that application. We're still in the event. On the eastern side of the state, they're still dealing with massive amounts of water. So our application period hasn't even really started yet. So that process is ongoing. There isn't a federal disaster declaration. It is reasonable to expect that South Dakota will get a federally declared disaster for, for the flooding that we're, we're experiencing statewide. That is a reasonable assumption, but it's not a given. Pennington County will probably exceed its per capita just with the destruction of that bridge. So, so Pennington County will, will most likely be a, a subapplicant if you choose to go that route or an applicant to those, to that disaster process. So what does that mean? That means that there is a possibility that some, I, I would say, start at 75% of whatever costs are incurred may be reimbursed through the federal government. So that percentage may go as, as high as 85%, but, but 75% is a good solid number for, for a FEMA disaster declaration reimbursement for that project.
So do you and Joe work together on the declaration, or you do it? How do we?
So I've been working with Holly and Joe. I think we're going to have a, a special meeting where the, the commission will choose whether or not to declare a disaster based on, on losing this bridge. That's the first step, and then we see how that process plays out. Now, you know, applying for temporary, you know, some, some, some reimbursement for the temporary bridge in and of itself is allowable under, under a FEMA disaster declaration. The problem is you have to justify it. You have to justify, hey, there's critical infrastructure on the other side of the bridge. There's absolutely no other way to access it. There, there has to be a compelling reason that you, that you spent money on a temporary access. And, and I know that the landowners in the audience would vehemently disagree with FEMA's stance on this, but taking care of livestock is not something that FEMA considers important enough to, to reimburse costs on. So while I understand that, we would not be in very good ground. It's allowable to apply for. I would not expect us to be reimbursed for temporary costs. The last thing I'll mention that, and then I'll be happy to stand for any questions that I might have missed, is when FEMA is here working with us on that bridge, if the road is the choice of the county, that can be submitted to FEMA as well. And obviously, we're talking dollars and cents. And if FEMA looks at those two things and says, "Well, it's this much out of our pocket to rebuild the bridge, and it's this much out of our pocket to rebuild the road." If the road is more cost benefit, there's a chance that they would allow that as well. So there is, there is a chance, and I emphasize the word "chance", that there would be FEMA reimbursement through a disaster declaration for both of the options that the highway department has laid out. And then to close my comments, I will circle back around and say, the chance of FEMA reimbursing what the county expends to solve this problem cannot be dependent on expecting or not expecting that reimbursement. Please don't let the, the possibility of FEMA dollars influence that decision.
Thank you. Questions for Dustin?
Madam Chair. Dustin, we've talked about convenience, but we haven't addressed safety. What, if there's an emergency situation at one of their residents, if emergency vehicles got to come in there, what kind of an impact is that going to be with that bridge gone?
So you certainly, when time is of the essence, if that's, if the bridge is the most expedient way into a given area, if that bridge is not there, just as the landowners now taking care of their, their livestock are inconvenienced by time and distance, emergency services can be inconvenienced by time and distance as well. Now, I would certainly invite the landowners to, to, to provide more clarity. My understanding is that there is a single residence on the other side of that bridge, and I don't know if you've moved in yet. Are you living there yet, or are you still in Blackhawk? So as it stands right now, they're, you know, they're over on the other side working. So if there's an accident and they need an ambulance, if they're over on the other side working and there's a wildfire or a structure fire and they need emergency services, as the conditions are right now, that's going to be a, a very, very difficult area to access for emergency services. Either of those solutions, a, a traversable road or a replacement bridge will, will certainly improve access, but that's, that's absolutely an aspect to take into consideration when you make your determination.
So I think we want to continue this, if I'm correct, so we can look at it, so we can have more questions. We can ask more questions. Is that the direction of the board? Okay, give me just a second, and I'll let you speak. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we personally inspect the, I guess it'd be both sides of the bridge.
Basically, a continuance to the two weeks? Mr. Ross, connect?
I'll make that motion.
And if we could, likely we will have to set up a use of a side-by-side by the sheriff to get down that section line. You know, so if we can, set up a time for, for everybody to go at once, if we could.
We'll have Holly set it up for us if that would work in the next two weeks with works for the sheriff office and you. There's been a motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews, for a continuance. We usually don't speak on continuates, but some of the landowners would like to speak. So we'll go ahead and let them speak since we started. You, sir, come on over. Your name, sir?
My name's Gail Brunz. I live on the west end of 230th Street, which was better known as the section line, dirt road. I'm, I'd like to give my thoughts on the whole thing. I know this is probably, the bridge is going to be, not having a bridge there is going to be an extreme inconvenience for those people on that east end, if they have to come clear around. The section line itself, I'm kind of an old guy and been there, my family's been there for over 100 years. We've used that section line. I have land for two miles on both sides of that road, that section line. We know when to use it and when not to use it. Gumbo, when it's wet, don't use it. About two weeks later, it's going to be concrete. And that's the way we've operated for over, my family for over 100 years. Myself, I don't want an improved road there. It's just going to create one more racing track around the block to nowhere. Because the people that need it need to come across the creek to access their land. And then they've got to go clear back around to get where they got to be. A temporary bridge is, in my estimation, is the answer. And then eventually, when you get the money, put in a permanent bridge. That road will be accessible as soon as I can get the county to get it. We'll come in there and do a little maintenance on it. Some of that destruction on that road has just been strictly from what has happened, from tractors, two or three, but also county equipment has went down that road and tore it up. Now, there is a sign at my driveway, I'm only an eighth of a mile off the highway, Highway 161st Avenue. And there's a sign there that says, "Beware, minimum weight maintenance on this road." People are very good about not going down that road because there's nothing down there. It's all owned by the people that are sitting right here. They have, there's no reason for anybody else to go down there. So we're going to put a three-mile road down there to a dead end.
We're going to come out there and see it.
Yes.
So we can have you guys kind of, we'll be able to understand what you're seeing.
Yes. I think that would be number one.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for speaking. Ma'am, you've been wanting to speak. Your name, please?
Hello, I'm Trini Brink, and we are new owners there. My husband has spoke before. A couple of points that I wanted the commissioners to consider in this matter are, and Commissioner Ross Connect had touched on that, is the safety. We speak about the families that this is involving that are on the other side of that, of the creek. But my thoughts also go to the families, and there's several. I don't know how many, but there are several families that are between the highway and that, that bridge that has gone out. Now, that is their only way in. Now, if, if the bridge is not rebuilt, that's, that's their only way in or out, which I see as, you know, when they, when the bridge was there before, there was that peace of mind. If something, if a wildfire or something goes on between their property and that highway, then they have a way out on the other side. And then another point I wanted to bring up is because we bought the property new, where they go out and survey, those are all, have recently been done. And we have discovered that the road that you're speaking of, of rebuilding, is actually not in the proper place. It's not on the section line. So when you're talking about dollars for that, you're going to need to include that extra, that it, there's an existing road there that is not where it should be. So don't include that, that, there's that section that needs to be accounted for that will need to be rebuilt in a different spot.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey. So we have a motion to continue by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I know we've just talked about this. So what happens in the next two weeks? Can the residents get to the property? Joe, just information on that?
We had Carlos, any wonderwood foreman, go out there. I didn't make it out there yesterday. He doesn't feel that it's in, in our best interest to get a motor grader on there right now. As soon as you break that surface, he said he, he kind of kicked the crust off that section line. And as Mr. Brunz alluded to, that gumbo, when it's, when it's wet, it's wet.
So can they access their properties? How are they getting to their properties at this point?
At this point, I, I believe, you know.
I've been.
Come on up, come on up. Sorry, I'm sorry I'm adding this to it, but then we're going to have people calling in the next two weeks with maybe no access, so.
I have been down the section line two miles yesterday. I went with Carlos. We took pictures of the section line. Yes, the section line currently is a mess because during that storm, we had some people to get in and out to get to their cattle. The county had to go put their signs up at the bridge saying, "Yeah, beware down there." And so, yes, it's a kind of a mess. But I can tell you this, I've seen a person drive two miles west on that section line yesterday, in a Suburban. Probably slowly, but they got there. But they had to turn around because that last mile, which is problematic for me, but I've learned over the years to just, you know, use the ditch if you have to and wait for dry weather. And if the county will come in, do some maintaining, that road can stay just the way it is. But build the bridge.
Thank you. We've had a lot of discussion on this. If we have any of the neighbors who'd like to email us or anything at this point, we are going to come out and see what you're going through, so we appreciate that. Is it quick? Is it quick? Okay.
I'll just offer this up.
Come on up, so we're listening. Thanks, Mr. Brink.
I'll just offer this up to the commissioners is that, so my place is right next to Lynn's on the south, or on the north side of the, the bridge there. And I've got two Ranger crews sitting there, because that's what you'll need to get down the road. But then you can get a sense of what it takes from our residents to go all the way back into town and then come all the way back out. And it's a Ranger, because that's what you need. Getting a pickup down there, except for the last couple of days, is near impossible. Right now, both Lynn and I have tractors parked on the south side. So our tractors are just sitting out there so that we, we can get to them. But it is a, it's a jaunt in a Ranger. I just, I'll give you that.
Thank you, sir.
But if, if you guys would like to, I got two of them. They both run. I'll get them full of gas.
Thank you, sir. Did we, we already voted? Am I correct? Sorry about that continuance, but wanted to get all the information. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
19 is Items from Human Resources, 2019 Elected Officials Compensation Survey.
Morning Commissioners, John Morrow, County Human Resources. So in January, we spoke about this, and then I actually reached out to some counties to get some additional data. But basically, at the request of the board, the HR Department initiated a review of elected official and the commission office staff compensation level. Six counties were contacted, including two in North Dakota and four in South Dakota, to get some comparable data. Again, apples to apples is very difficult because there's no other county that's exactly like Pennington County. So what we've done is, is kind of give you some data to supplement the, the wage information that they provided. But based upon the recent data that I did receive, and the last data actually came in a week ago, week and a half ago, I'd suggest that we maintain current compensation rates and the structures for elected officials and the commission office staff, making adjustments once we do the comprehensive review later this year. But then I am also recommending that if budgetary constraints would permit, that you would adjust your rates to be more closely reflective of the time and work commitments required. So with that, you'll see that there was a spreadsheet with some of the comparable data. The top of that spreadsheet shows Pennington County and the current rates. The additional counties that are shown there include Brown County, which is Aberdeen, and Burley County, which is Bismarck. and Burley County, which is Bismarck, North Dakota area, Cass County, which is the Fargo area, Lincoln County, which is just immediately south of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha. You'll see Meade County, just adjacent here to the west, and then Minnehaha County as well. So all told, the populations vary anywhere from 28,000 in Meade County up to 188,000 folks in Minnehaha County. And you'll see the data there. Also, the color coding with regard to the counties that are included on this spreadsheet shows the frequency of the county commissioner meetings. So not that that plays a real active role, I just want you to have kind of a comparison so you knew how often they were getting together for those meetings. And then this was actually provided by Holly earlier. This would've come through in December. And she provided you also information on a number of counties, and she's been kind enough to do this each year over recent years. You can see the information there as well. But based upon the data there, what I'd recommend again, if there is gonna be an adjustment made at the current time, I would suggest that it be done for the commissioners and that the remaining elected positions and Commission Office staff actually be done as part of the, the comprehensive survey that we're doing later this year. So kind of an update with that as well. We've contacted all five of the vendors that were to be receiving the request for proposals. Four of them have responded. The fifth one, we still are trying to make contact with the appropriate person in their firm. They're not sure who would actually handle this part of the country, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to get that finalized. But all told, that would be done by the end of the year for consideration at the budget hearings next year, so...
Thank you, John. Questions? Board? Direction?
Good work, John.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks, John, for bringing this forward. But, and this is probably a good timing, so that's why I asked to have a hard copy so I could keep this, because I think this is something, when we come to budget time, this is what we're gonna have to discuss, and you're gonna have to have some type of idea of the averages and, and kinda think about that. So I think that's good information to have, but I also like to see the wage study, but I think we gotta keep that in the back of our minds when we set that budget.
So basically, the motion can be to wait. Do we have to make a motion if we're not going to? Okay, didn't think so. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Number twenty, Request for Variance to Ordinance 14 Standards and Approval for Second Approach. Do we have, hold on just a sec, sir. County, do you have a recommendation? Hold on just a sec, sir. Mark and Joe? And your name, sir?
Your name?
Your name.
Oh, excuse me, Rod Sather.
Thank you.
Mark Shaw, Pennington County Highway. I guess our recommendation would be, well, other than the fact that additional points of access negatively affect traffic safety, in this case, it's very minimal, the effect. Pennington County Highway has no objections or concerns with the Board approval of the second approach, if that's what they choose to do.
Okay. Board, do we have a motion or, on this? Or do, would we like to hear discussion first?
Discussion.
Okay. Discussion, sir?
Battleview Road is just like five miles east of Keystone, just off Highway 40, and it's a couple hundred yard long road at most. And it would create hardship if we had to get up the one, one driveway. And I think the, the problem came when the original plan was drawn up, apparently back in the late 90s, that only one driveway was put in for some reason when you gotta walk out. And you're in a set of house on top, you think that would've been a no-brainer to put two, two driveways in, but apparently not at that, when the plan, plan, by some of the best plans, didn't work. So would appreciate a variance for a second driveway.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy?
Mark, so the sec, I, I've seen the drawings and the output, and does the second approach is the same as the first one that was approved? I mean, is there any improvements that he, maybe he should do to make it the width? Is everything...
We visited on site on Battle Creek Road there. You're correct, there isn't an approved permit for a single approach on this property. After inspection of the second approach, that is not permitted. We, we found that both approaches meet ordinance 14 specifications as far as width, minimum specifications, as far as width of 20-foot and 32-foot culvert and 15-inch diameter culverts. The one culvert on the west side especially would, could use some cleaning on the outflow side of it. It is about halfway plugged with some siltation, just on the outside, I believe, of the culvert, but...
That'd be Mr. Sather's responsibility?
That would be the landowner's responsibility, yes.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner LaCroy?
Probably just happened this spring, too, I'd imagine.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to make sure before I make a decision that they both were the same and they met the requirements, even though it wasn't approved, but...
Any other, sorry, sorry, sir. Any other discussion or a motion?
Move for approval of the variance.
Moved by LaCroy?
Ordinance 14 standards and approve.
Your second?
The second approach.
I'll second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mark? Number 21, do you want a five-minute break, Board?
Yes.
Before we start? Do we have a motion?
Move, take a break. Five-minute break.
By LaCroy, to take a five-minute break. Second by...
Second.
Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Let's move to Items from Planning and Zoning. Ms. Pete, or Ms. PJ, Mr. PJ Conover. Variance number, is this Board of Adjustment?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to open Board of Adjustment, please?
So move.
Moved by Drews, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. PJ?
Thank you.
A, please?
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item A under the Board of Adjustment is variance 1821 for Jolly Lane Greenhouse. Tim Sim is the owner and agent to reduce the minimum required setback along the eastern property line from 25 feet to zero feet. The applicant has requested a continuation. So the motion is to continue variance 1821 to the April 16, 2019. Board of Adjustment meeting to allow the landowner time to work with the city of Rapid City.
So move.
Motion by Drews to continue. Second by...
Second.
Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you. Item B is variance 1902 for Timothy and Amanda Hutton to reduce the side yard setback from 25 feet to five feet in a low-density residential district. The subject property is .81 acres. And what the applicant is looking to do is to add on to the northeast-facing side of the property to make it a three-car garage. There are no easements of record for this property. It was platted back in the 1960s. It is legal non-conforming for lot size and also for the current setbacks of the houses a house was put in prior to 1994. However, with the addition of the proposed garage extension, they would lose the legal non-conforming status for setbacks. And thus is the application for this side of the, of the residence prior to construction. So what the applicant, again, is looking to do is add on a third stall to go five feet from the northeast property line. There is considerable floodplain on the property, mainly to the southeast side. The subject residence is located in the 500-year floodplain, which we don't regulate. But as you can see, the buildable area on the property is hindered, not only by topography, but also by special flood hazard area. This was routed through to interapartmental review. Only item of note that came up is if there was gonna be any work in the floodplain. The county environmental planning supervisor just commented that a floodplain development permit, bless you, would be needed. The U.S. Forest Service also has no objection to this as they also border the subject property. So as the county, or as the commissioners are aware, there are criteria that are required to be met for a variance. The first is that the specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, and sighting exist. Staff has verified through the Department of Equalization records that the existing single-family resident with attached garage was constructed in 1969. Staff has verified through a survey provided by the applicant that the existing single-family resident does not currently meet the side yard setback requirement for a low-density residential district, which is 25 feet. And there is also a significant portion of the regulatory floodway, as mentioned before, so buildable area on the property is hindered. And also, per our ordinance, you cannot put a, a forward-facing garage in the front portion of your property. So there isn't really much room in the front, either if you wanted to put a single stall. He wouldn't need to get a variance for that anyway. The second criteria is that the variance is not granted use, which is otherwise excluded from the protect, this particular district. The setback variance would not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded in this zoning district. The third item is that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet or exceed the 25-foot setback for the property line. And this would prevent the applicant from constructing any additions to either side of the residence beyond vertical additions, since the side yard setbacks are already violation as the resident sits today. The fourth item is that granting a variance is not contrary to public interest. Staff does not believe it is contrary to the public interest. We only received one phone call about this property after the hearing letters went out, and it was just a question, wasn't a complaint, it wasn't an objection. It was just making sure that the variance was only for that northeast property line and no other portions of the property. With that, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1902, staff recommends it be approved with one condition.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews?
PJ?
Yes, sir.
If this is granted, would they still have access to the back of that property as far as...
Would, who's, they as the owners?
I mean, could you drive to the back of that property or not?
There would, there would be a five-foot space between, to the property line and probably more than that to the next residence. And usually, that's what minor drayage utility easements are set for, is for access. But because of the age of this, of when this property was planted, those easements were not put in place.
So I guess my question is, emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to get to the rear of the property if...
Don't believe so, but the applicant is here if you'd like to ask him as well. Here's a, some ground pictures for you.
Lot next to it? Did you see the lot next to it?
But I think, well, they actually...
Were you, yeah, but you, you mean so you could drive around and get to the property? Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other complaints on that property? PJ, the next-door neighbor that is right next to the, where the garage is gonna be built, there has been no complaints?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay. So the applicant, if you'd like to come up?
Tim Hutton?
Do you have any questions for Tim Hutton, Board?
I will.
Or motion? Oh, you do?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you don't.
There would be access to the back along that tree line, too, I guess would be the south. That's an open lot. I mean, it's not mine, but you can get to the backyard from there.
Okay.
The garage, it's being built, is drive all the way through. There's a garage door in front and back.
There's one in back. Commissioner LaCroy?
No, he, he just answered it. That was the question Gary had talked about. And I, I think another concern would probably be to, getting to your, your own backyard. That property right here next, is that open?
To the south?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an open lot that's owned by what would be 13113.
Okay. Yeah, no further questions.
This definitely is a guy thing. Let's make lots of garages for all my cars and, without sounding mean. And is it a half-two? And you're only gonna have five feet between there? I guess my only concern, I guess, was the neighbors having you right next and that close to them, and they don't have an objection, so, anyway.
I'd, I'd make the motion to approve the variance with one condition.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Motion to close the Board of Adjustment, please?
So move.
Sorry.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C, First Reading Public Hearing of Rezone Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Fatter Boys Incorporated, Bob Fuchs.
Item C, as you stated, is First Reading Public Hearing of Rezone 1901 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1901 for Fatter Boys Incorporated. Bob Fuchs is the agent to redo, to rezone 6.94 acres from Limited Agriculture District to Highway Service District and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plain unit development sensitive to Highway Service District. This incorporates 6.94 acres. And again, the applicant is Fatter Boys Incorporated. Bob Fuchs is the agent, and he is in the audience today if you have any questions. The existing land use of the property has been a legal non-conforming campground since the 60s. Mr. Fuchs has purchased the property, and during the purchase time and meeting with our staff, we had discovered that the campground, even though it was used since 1960 and considered illegal non-conforming, had ceased use in 2017, thereby losing the legal non-conforming status because that use was ceased for one year. So the applicant to take steps to be able to do an RV site and campground, not only would probably, well, will need a conditional use permit at some point, but is also looking to rezone the property to a more suitable zoning district in this, in this area. It is consisted of three developmental lots. It takes access off of 385. There is special flood hazard area on the north side of the property. There are a number of buildings on the property. All of them are at least 25 years old. As far as the surrounding zoning, within a half-mile of the subject property here outlined in orange, it's pretty much every zoning district we got minus light industrial. So there's eight different zoning districts represented in that half-mile out of the nine that we have. As far as the future land use, as you can see, it's also a myriad of PUD-sensitive, heavy industrial, highway service, PUDs, suburban residential, and the yellow, which is low-density residential. This was routed through to interapartmental review. Item was noted that came back is because of the special flood hazard area. The county environmental planner, I just wanted to let him know that any work that's done in the special flood hazard area is gonna require the minimum floodplain development permits. And the county environmental planner noted that there's no concerns with the current proposal. However, when the applicant applies for a conditional use permit, they will need to determine what currently exists for a septic system, then develop a proposal for what they intend to use the system for, and any expansion that they plan on making, and they'll have to meet their criteria for the Pennington County zoning ordinance 204J. Plus, because it's a commercial use, Department of Natural Resources will be involved, and the applicant is aware of that. Also, comment came back from the South Dakota Department of Transportation. They do not object, but they did state that they will not allow additional access to US 16 or US 385 from this property onto the road. Black Hills Energy had no objections, other than just mentioning that the power line that they have that goes across the property would need to stay in place. Hill City Planning Department, or Planning Personnel commented, they don't necessarily disapprove, they were just concerned about the, the existing bridge and whether it can handle RVs going across. Well, while that's not necessarily a criteria for approval or denial of a rezone, it was, would be something that if this rezone was approved, would be addressed with the conditional use permit application. The U.S. Forest Service also commented that they have no objections, and they also have their normal other stipulations added on to that. Again, this was a legal non-conforming use for years. It was lost just because the license wasn't obtained through the state in 2017. And staff believes that the proposed use, as far as we know, it is consistent and in harmony with the surrounding zoning in the area. And therefore, staff would recommend approval, well, staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of Rezone 1901 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1901.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Board, for PJ? All right, let's have the applicant. Your name, sir?
Hi, I'm Bob Fuchs with the Firehouse Brewing Company. And the only thing that really came out of it was the, make sure that we had a good enough bridge. And I drove a 30,000-pound fire...
Is there any questions or motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
By Ross Connect, second by LaCroy, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item twenty-two, resolution of support for the new B-121 bomber and training site at Ellsworth Air Force Base. Ms. Holly, would you like to read that?
This is a resolution of Pennington County to of support for the new B-21 bomber and training site at the Ellsworth Air Force Base. Whereas on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, US Air Force Secretary Heather Wilson announced that Ellsworth Air Force Base in South Dakota will become home to the B-21 formal training unit, and be the first base to receive an operational squadron of B-21 Raider bombers. And whereas the B-21s are currently being developed as part of the Air Force's long-range striker, strike bomber program, and will be capable of delivering conventional or thermonuclear weapons. And whereas, the announcement reaffirms the vital role Ellsworth will play in our nation's defense strategy for years to come, and whereas, the selection of Ellsworth for such a monumentous and critical mission will provide for significant growth and stimulate our local economy for years to come, and whereas, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners are proud of the dedication and commitment by our congressional representative, local communities, and their leadership, and the Ellsworth Developmental Authority in their actions to make Ellsworth a next-generation airbase. And whereas, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners wish to thank all federal congressional delegates involved, Secretary Wilson, South Dakota State Government, the Ellsworth Development Authority, and the citizens of Rapid City and Box Elder for their commitment to making Ellsworth Air Force Base and surrounding communities a desirable military station. And therefore, it be resolved, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners are proud to support the selection of the Ellsworth Air Force Base as the new home to the B-21 formal training unit. We will continue to offer support of the military, or, excuse me, of the Ellsworth Air Force Base, its missions, its leadership, and its military members and their families now and for years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there a motion, Board, to accept the resolution?
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to thank everybody for all the work that went into obtaining this. This has been years in the process, this isn't something that just happened. This has probably been in the workings for fifteen to twenty years at this point in time. And so, really appreciate all the effort that's gone into it. This is a big boon for our area, I believe. This is a continued effort to be proactive in the defense of our country, and I want to really thank Secretary Wilson for her efforts in this, along with our congressional delegation, to obtain this designation. The B-21s are really going to be a neat aircraft, something that's very futuristic-looking, and will be a great addition to our efforts out here at Ellsworth.
Thank you, Gary. I'd like to second that motion. Everything Commissioner Drew said is positive for Pennington County, for South Dakota, and we appreciate our military people that add to our economic development, and just what they do for us all the way around. So, Commissioner LaCroy, did you have something to say?
No. I'm just going to echo off of Gary and probably many others, you know, that as he said, this wasn't something that just happened overnight. You know, with the scare that happened ten, twelve years ago with the closures and so forth, Rapid City stepped up and created the Ellsworth Development Authority to gather some of the property around there and make some changes, and some of them were doing away with an exit that did away with some businesses that were out there. I mean, there's a lot of changes that had to be done, but the community came together and moved forward, and this is what happened. Mrs. Wilson, me and Deb had the chance to meet her when she, for a short term, at the School of Mines, but when she took on the secretary, she was very positive for our community and supports us, and I think that was one of it, along with their delegates. So, I think it's a big kudos to everybody involved that happened with this.
Awesome. And we have a new woman commander adding to their mix, so that's pretty awesome, too. So, a lot of positive happening at Ellsworth Air Force Base.
And there were other communities, or bases considered, and to think that Rapid City, I mean, we're talking some major bases, I think it's pretty impressive that Ellsworth was the selection. I believe they made the right choice.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect, Commissioner LaCroy, and Commissioner Drew. We do have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner LaCroy, on speaker request forms, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Me and Holly had a talk on this. Basically, what you're seeing in front of you is just two speaker request forms, one with, you know, from what we gathered, one that has a three-minute, you're allowed up to three minutes, and one without. After careful consideration, I think a lot of people, and commissioners alone, have concerns with stating three minutes. The whole idea of this is to bring some structure and get people used to it. I'm almost thinking for a rewording for one of these, we suggest three minutes. And the reason why I say that, that gets us back into the practice of, we're not going to shut you down. My intentions was never to have a three-minute timeline. You start, you stop, that type of thing. I think that comes from the commission and the chair, and I think the chair would be able to know how the meeting is going, whether you say it's going to be three or not. And we all know when those situations are going to happen. Suggestion is just a suggested, I would think is a suggested time amount that's respectful. I mean, consciously, you see three minutes, you try to do it, and, I mean, I'm not trying to limit anybody's speech, you know, today, just out of curiosity, I timed a few people, and one was over twelve minutes. You know, and that's just one instance. And I think a lot of times, we get into, when we come to our meetings, we read the information, and then also, we're getting retold the information several times, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I just think if a person knows suggested three minutes, they're going to hit their strong points, and if we have questions, we're going to ask them, and that's the whole thing, is to ask our question. When we come here, we know we have questions for the applicant or so forth. But that's my idea on that, is maybe just putting on their suggested three minutes, and then it's up to the chair to, at any, you know, if it comes to the point, we know we have a special meeting there, we know we have five people for one side, and six people, and they'll know by the speaker request forms, before they start speaking, we could, the chair could say, please limit it to three minutes, we've got five, five, something along those. We've got to put a lot of trust in our chair and vice chair to be able to see that and through that. I think that's my suggestion on the way that should go. Some of the other details that we talked about from the last meeting, is I'm suggesting a little table, or something along those lines, and that's where we'd have some of the rules. I mean, please try to turn in your speaker request form before ten-thirty for items such and such, I mean, we can limit it out that way, but you're still going to take speaker request forms, not everybody's going to be here, if they're on the planning department stuff, they're not going to come here at nine and wait an hour and a half to turn. So, you still be able to take those throughout the meeting as needed. We don't have to make this strict, this is just starting to set some structure, and you see how it goes, and you can change and adjust as you go. My biggest fear is, we start to do new speaker request forms, and we see change is getting hard and difficult, and we want to go back to our old way. It's easier to do that than to fight through some of the difficulties we may have to make it work. That's my whole reasoning for speaker request forms.
Thank you, Lloyd.
I'd like to take any feedback.
My thing with this, from, I don't think you need to put the three minutes in there unless we do a special meeting. I don't think people have violated over the three minutes to have to put three minutes in there. Once in a while, like you said, we have a person that speaks a little longer, but I don't think we should put a limit on it when we first do it, unless we have a special meeting, and then the chair announces we have speaker requests, and then on there, we have the three minutes. But I don't see we've ever had much of a problem, even in the city, with people speaking past the three minutes. I understand what you're saying with structure, but if there isn't a problem with a bunch of people doing that, there isn't a reason to put it as a rule, how about that? So, I remember they did have a three-minute in the city, and they took it off. So, I think we should start with it off, and then if we needed it, then put it on. Does that make sense? So, that's just my thought, Commissioner LaCroy, but I also like to thank you for bringing this forward, because we've been saying this for years, and we've been trying to do this, Lloyd, and I think it's not a hard thing to do, and like you said, it's good structure, so I'm glad you brought this forward. It's a positive, I believe, for our committee. So, Commissioner Ross Connect, or Commissioner Drews?
I'm in agreement with you, Deb. The three minutes, when you sit there and come up with a definite time, that can be a little, it could be hard to deal with, I think, just leaving it open, and we make the call during the meetings, and if we want it to be three minutes, we let that be known at the start of the meeting, and if we want it to be five minutes, we have the latitude to make adjustments.
Commissioner Drews?
Well, I've never had any experience with the speaker request forms, and so I can't speak either for or against it, so I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, we would pick, are we going to start this process? What were you...
I would, Madam Chair. I would suggest we take, incorporate speaker request form number two, that doesn't have no time limit. That's what I'd suggest, and we start.
All second for discussion?
Okay. Now, I'll make this, can I have the floor back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. I'd say probably, I don't know how you think about next meeting, or would you wait to the third meeting before we incorporate?
I think we're ready.
You guys are ready?
Just, I think we're ready, it's not as hard as we think, and Commissioner LaCroy, sorry to interrupt you, sir. I think I could suggest it at the beginning of the meeting, and then before planning, just to kind of get people into the mode, and then we just keep doing that, just in case, because people haven't been in the county with speaker requests, but I think once they get it, I remember even when I first started, I wasn't in the planning department there at the city, or the city council, and it was pretty cut and dry for me that I had when I could speak, and when I was going to speak, that was a lot easier than just trying to figure out the process, not telling me anything. So, we can start by telling the process of speaker requests in our first part of our meeting.
I think that's a good idea, and like I said, it's good, Deb's got experience with this, because she's going to have to, at the beginning of the meeting, say, if you want a speaker request form, please turn it into Kara or Holly, and then again, just before the ten-thirty break, you can suggest it again. But I think it's, I appreciate you guys open-minded, willing to try this out, because I think, like I said, we're going to have some hiccups, and it's just going to take a little getting used to, but I think it'll work good for us.
I think it's a good idea, Commissioner LaCroy. Any other discussion?
The suggestion or the motion would be to the second one, where the chair will call on each speaker at the appropriate time. The board may limit the time allowed for each speaker. Please step to the lectern as soon as you are recognized by the chair, and identify yourself for the record before beginning your comments. And then on there has a agenda item, number, the options supported or opposed, available to answer questions, yes or no, your name, and also address, city, and email, and then if speaking for an organization, and speaker's official capacity. So, I think it's got everything we need to start where we're going. It also, if we have somebody that had questions, this would also works good for, Holly will have a name and address, somebody has something that they're talking to Commissioner LaCroy, and they, he wants to call back or follow-up on number three for his district, he also has the guy's address and email and stuff to get ahold of him, so it also makes it very convenient for that as well, for commissioners or people, so Commissioner LaCroy.
Sorry. Just brought up a thought, when I really started looking through this, when all the information's provided, the follow-up should be through the commission manager. I really don't want this, anybody to get this, to think that this is collecting data, and somebody can come in and take it and use it to contact people.
Right.
It's, once it's used, I think they get disposed of. If, you know what I'm saying, unless somebody wants contact, like Deb was saying, we can keep that contact, but I think at the end of the meeting, they should be destroyed.
Hi, sorry, PJ, kind of director of planning department, just a quick question. Because of the amount of information that's going to be on those applications, is there going to be a standard break now before planning, so people filling them out and handing them in won't be disruptive?
We can give like a five-minute or ten-minute break before.
Just so we know what to tell our people.
Because usually, we do have a break before that, because we need a break, so we'll just make sure that we have a break, in case we can announce it before the break. We have a speaker request form, that's how we can do the process. It's kind of, we're going to learn along the way, but I think that's a great, great idea. PJ, make sure that, you know, we announce that, and then give that five-minute break in case they missed out, or they just came a little bit late, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, PJ.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, or Ross Connect?
I've seen this work in other communities, just watching videos, and sometimes the topic can be heated, and they have these speaker request forms, but not everybody wants to get up and speak, so that on the speaker request forms that they were using, they had a comment section, where they could be at the meeting, they could fill the form out, do a written comment, and submit it.
Nice.
To the chair.
Good point.
Because they might not want to get up and be publicly recognized, so a comment section might be in order, too.
Okay. I think that, yeah, great idea. Did you hear that, Ms. Holly?
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the, just a little bit of what you were talking about?
Oh, I've seen, there is a, watching the mining ordinance in other communities, which they had, you know, they had a large audience, and some of the participants did not want to be identified, but they had the opportunity to fill the request card out and just put comments, and then they would submit that, and then those comments would be followed up by, in this case, it'd be your office, or it'd be referred to one of the commissioners to get back with them.
Thank you. So, we do have a motion on the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and that'd be option two with no time limit. Thank you for all your work, Mr. LaCroy, Commissioner LaCroy, and Officer Manager Holly Hennies. Next, we have committee reports. Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I attended the Black Hills National Forest Board. I'm going to, left my notes in the car, but I'm going to get with, they have a grant program, a committee that they're creating, and they're looking for some volunteers, and once I get the information all forwarded on to Mr. Ross Connect, he, he might be interested in it, but the meeting wasn't really a recorded meeting, because we didn't have the notice, we didn't have the notice given out in time, so, something along those lines, so. But they are working on four different groups, the trails, mining, and those guys are meeting in two separate meetings prior to the monthly meeting. The other meeting I attended was the, our community health, which is good, they finally got the building for mental health done, and they gave tours of that, and that's looking There's a couple other meetings that I attended, but there's really not another to report.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
On March twenty-first, I attended my first Pennington County Council of
got the building for mental health done, and they gave tours of that, and that's looking There's a couple of other meetings that I attended, but there's really not another to report.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
On March 21st, I attended my first Pennington County Council of Beijing, and it was quite interesting, because I, I'm aging.
You are?
And I just wondered, you know, what that was all about, but they're doing some good things. One of the things, the bylaws require an audit, and so we're, I think, we're trying to find out where the original bylaws are, because an audit can be very expensive, and if you don't have a lot of funds, it can really put a dent in your budget. Another project that they're working on is a transportation survey, so they can, older folks that have medical conditions, or they can't drive, and they need to get to a store or get a prescription filled out, that they have some means of affordable transportation. With that being said, that's, I think it's, I know a lot more about that particular committee than I did before I went.
And you remember what they talked about, so you must not be getting to, I didn't say, okay, I won't finish that. Anything else? Commissioner Ross Connect?
Oh, that's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Drews?
Just a couple. Attended the building committee meeting, and for my own personal information, I'm just trying to clarify our responsibility, the commission responsibility as to the buildings located at the fairgrounds relative to maintenance, et cetera. Our buildings ground superintendent, Mike Cool, was pulling those contracts together for that clarification. And compensation committee meeting, there's really nothing more to report on that, as John and HR has brought those discussions to this commission already. That's all I have.
Thank you. For me, I went to the Economic Development Board, asked lots of questions. They are moving it forward to join the economic development with the chamber, basically, and take their 501(c)(3) and make it elevate. So, a lot of that's been in the newspaper. I toured the second floor of the care campus, that was pretty cool, looking at the different areas. I always like to look at it before, it's got carpeting and all the walls, and then see what it looks like when it's done. I've been seeing it since there was no floor. Remember, it used to be a gym, and they put that second floor on there, and that was pretty cool, it's seen the pylons being dug in and some other stuff that has been done. So, thank you, Mike Cool, for taking your time out for that. And then the fairgrounds is working on the stall barn, so tomorrow, I'm going to the city and asking if we can get a couple variances moved forward for us to move that stall barn. They did, thankfully, gave us vision funds of $550,000, so we're going to move forward on that and get that done. And then I hopefully, I think that's about it. There's a few other meetings, but those are on the bridges and the things that were happening. So, a lot of things happening with the county, a lot of positive moving forward, second floor, your fairgrounds, a lot of stuff going on where you guys will move forward, Gary and Lloyd can update us on the future on some of the stuff that's moving forward, on fair and different things that are going on there, they always have activities. Anything else that I missed, Lloyd?
I, I forgot something, just bring it up, it was the fair board meeting where the Hero Award was given.
Thank you, and you brought that forward, Lloyd, so thank you for reminding us.
But there were also three new board members elected to the board, and that was Jason Solomon, Casey Gerlick, and Bart Banks. I think Bart Banks was on before, but he got on, was approved, so it was a very good process, and a lot of people showed up for it, and some of the, and it was Darla Crown who actually presented the Hero Award to the Sheriff's Department, she had a lot of good things to talk about and praised, and so, and I can tell you, I think Gary was there when, when the selection for the Hero Award, all the awards, not just that one, but the other three that were given out, a lot of thought process and consideration of, of the people that helped the fair out. There is so much volunteerism and people that do stuff, and that was one way that they wanted to express their appreciation, was through that, so.
Thank you.
And I know the fair board's appreciative, they got two members this year.
They got two new commissioners.
Well, they got a whole commissioner.
They have a quieter Commissioner La Croix, just kidding. Did I say that, did I say something nice? You said I had to say something nice.
I missed it, could you repeat it?
Only once. Commissioner Drews, please.
Well, the one area that Lloyd has been a little modest on saying anything about, Commissioner La Croix, myself, Holly, and Donna Mayer went to Buffalo last week for the Black Hills Counties District Meeting. That includes 14 counties, 14 western counties in South Dakota, goes from the North Dakota border down to Nebraska border, over to the Wyoming border. And so Lloyd was elected chairman of that group for this year. Ted Seaman from Mead County was elected vice chairman, Holly Hennies was elected secretary, and Kathy Glines from Harding County was elected treasurer. One of the speakers at that meeting included Bob Wilcox, our executive director for the County Association. Bob was really congratulatory towards the county officials for their involvement in this legislative session, and as always, I mean, it makes, we have some very strong lobbying efforts in here, but at the same time, as Bob points out, it means a whole lot more when it's coming right from the people in the counties that are working on the issues. So, he appreciated the efforts that was put toward all that. The main things he talked about really were the governor's bills, which I'll cover in our legislative update. We did have a gross receipts tax that was introduced this year, did die this year, but it had some good discussion. This obviously would be a sales tax available to some counties, it would, the way it was proposed, that it would require support from your voters in each county to even adopt that. But there are some, especially some of our smaller counties, where they have not a lot of private land that's taxable, where they are really running into a shortfall as far as being able to provide county services, and so that would be the big beneficiaries or something like that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have legislative session. Gary, Lloyd, you might be able to, if you have anything from your commission, your county board commission that they're bringing forward as well?
No, I think Gary did a good job covering it. He talked about what had happened, and I can tell you right now, I'm very appreciative of our new secretary. The notes are, were outstanding and very informational. I can say some past notes that I've read through, you know, were just basic minutes, but when you read through this, you can, there's actually the information there, if you want to click on this, that was shared, how she caught that so quick, I don't know, but.
You're talking about Ms. Holly?
Yes, I am, Ms. Holly. She did an awesome job on that, and has been elected to the new secretary, she did very good notes. I think we're going to have a good year. The first meeting was a learning one from, from my standpoint. I probably didn't have all the details of everything, but I think we're going to do a good job this year, Pennington County's going to be proud.
Congratulations, Lloyd and Holly. Gary Drews?
Just a quick follow-up on the bills that were introduced by Governor Noem and passed by the legislature relative to unforeseen expenses should there be violence and/or property damage due to unpeaceful protesting, such as was experienced in North Dakota relative to the Dakota Access Pipeline. I know a lawsuit has been brought relative to the passage of these bills, claiming it infringes on the First Amendment on freedom of speech. However, I don't believe that applies to these bills. It would apply if you are committing a crime or encouraging others to commit a crime. The new law would allow us as a county or the state to seek civil penalties from someone encouraging any criminal activity. On the other side of it, for legislative-wise, and this was discussed also at that meeting last week with the Black Hills Counties, there is a law that's in effect right now that requires if there is protest or damage or violence that's caused, that each county could be assessed up to two mils in order to pay for those costs relative to that. Well, two mils for Pennington County would, would be equal to about $17.5 million. And so, with the passage of these bills from the governor, I believe that our effort needs to be to go in and repeal that current legislation, get rid of that encumbrance on counties should something like that happen. So, that will be an effort that we will be taking up during the course of this next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, do you have anything on legislation deemed necessary that we need to know about?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. If not, let's go to approval of the vouchers, their motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by La Croix?
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Items from public? Come on, TV stations, newspaper, any public comment? Hey, you're publicly commenting, you might as well tell us what you're writing ahead of time. Get it. Number 27, executive session.
Do we need to take that thing off the table at all?
Oh, oh, yes. Number 14, can we take that off the table, please?
Uh-huh.
Do we have a motion to pull it off the table?
I would make that motion.
By Drews?
Second.
Seconded by La Croix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do we need to continue that, Holly?
Commissioners, you can address it today if you so wish. The applicant knew when he was supposed to be here, so we, you certainly can continue it, we can try and contact him again, or you can act on it today.
Let's try one more time, Holly, to contact him, just in case there is emergency.
Absolutely.
Is that okay with the board? Okay. Motion to continue, please.
Go move.
Moved for two weeks by Commissioner Drews. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Ross Connect, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, executive session, please. Holly, is that both personnel issues and contractual pending litigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have both of those, based, the personnel is SDCL 1-25-2-1, and the contractual pending litigation at SDL, CL 1-25-2-3. All, motion, please, to go in the executive session?
I'll make the motion to go in the executive session.
Motion by Ross Connect, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by La Croix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, motion to come out of?
Make the motion to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Jay, you're first, and John.
Welcome back. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office, I just have one motion I would request that you entertain. It would be to move that Pennington County hereby gives notice to the current owner of certain real property in Block 108 of the original township of Rapid City, South Dakota, that Pennington County will not exercise its first right of refusal to purchase said property, which is the subject of a pending option agreement dated May 15, 2018, and that Pennington County by contract reserves its first right of refusal as to any subsequent agreement or agreements for the purchase of property in Block 108.
Is there a motion?
That'd be my motion.
Jay's motion is Lloyd's motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Lloyd, do you have another motion? Thank you, Jay.
Uh...
Or Gary, sorry?
I'm Jerry.
Gary?
I've got a motion that, uh...
Might need some help, John.
Move to move Eric Witcher, Public Defender Director, to a Grade 26, Step 20, starting June, starting with the June 2019 paper.
Been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, second by, motion by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect on Mr. Witcher. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Go move. Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Lloyd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.